It's my pleasure to call to order this October 6, 2021, meeting of the James City County Planning Commission. Mr. Holt, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Knoll.
Present.
Ms. Knoll represents the Stonehouse District. Mr. Rose, who represents the Roberts District, could not be with us this evening. Ms. Leverens.
Here.
Ms. Leverens is an at-large member. Mr. Pollster.
Here.
Mr. Pollster represents the Jamestown District. Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor is an at-large member and is this year's vice chair. Mr. Croft.
Here.
Mr. Croft represents the Powhatan District. Mr. Haldeman.
Here.
Mr. Haldeman represents the Berkeley District and is this year's chair. I'm Paul Holt, Director of Community Development and Planning for the county. Sitting to my far, far left this evening is Mr. Max Salaven, our deputy county attorney. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda this evening, to move the consideration item from its current location, to move it after the consent agenda but before the public hearing cases this evening due to the expected length of the meeting tonight.
Mr. Holt, would you please call the roll on the motion?
On the motion, yes. Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Rose isn't here, sorry. Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman.
Aye. Mr. Holt, would you please also call the roll on amending the agenda as stated?
Yes. Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman.
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is amended.
Thank you very much. So we'll move ahead with Planning Commission considerations. James City County Parks Master Plan update. Mr. Leininger, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee. Over the past year and a half, our committee led by Parks and Rec, Planning, General Services have been working on a master plan update for three parks in the county. That's Upper County Park, JCC Recreation Center, and the War Hill Sports Complex. On April 9, 2021, the James City County Board of Supervisors endorsed updating the three parks, and on July 21, 2021, the same item was placed on the Development Review Committee's agenda as a discussion item. With me tonight is Alistair Parkinson from Parks and Rec. He will provide a more detailed update of the parks' updates and also some of the next steps for those parks. Following his presentation, staff recommends the Planning Commission to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, and we'll be happy to answer any questions you all have tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haldeman, members of the board, members of the commission. I'm excited to share with you this evening the plans for our three park master plan updates. As Tom mentioned, we had an interdepartmental team of folks from Parks and Rec, General Services, and Community Development work on these plans over the past year. So what I would like to do is just quickly go through each of the three parks and kind of highlight what the changes and additions are. So to start out with is Upper County Park. This is one of our oldest parks. It was a fairly established park, but it did not have an existing master plan in place. So when working on coming up with the amenities for this park, we leaned heavily on the 2017 Parks and Recreation Master Plan and determined that there were certain areas in the county where certain amenities weren't being met, namely the lack of gymnasiums, fitness areas, and hard-surface trails. So with that in mind, the features that we included on the updated master plan is the replacement of the toddler pool next to our existing swimming pool with a splash pad feature, a half-mile paved multi-use trail loop, a community gymnasium with indoor courts and a fitness area, pickleball and tennis courts, fenced off-leash dog area, an archery range for programs, a park maintenance and storage area, and increased parking to support the new amenities. The second park that we updated is the James City County Recreation Center Park. So again, this park did not have an existing master plan and is largely already developed. However, there is a parcel of property adjacent to the Rec Center that is the site of a former water tower, JCSA Water Tower, and it was an area that we wanted to develop along with the existing amenities around the Rec Center. So for this map, what we started out with was the closure of Ashbury Lane that connects and runs through the middle of the park. In order to make those two parcels connect for pedestrian crossing, we included the possibility of future expansion of the James City County Recreation Center, expansion of the existing skate park, a picnic shelter, and off-leash dog area in the former water tower site, restrooms and parking facility for those amenities, and additional restrooms and concessions near the softball and rectangular athletic fields. And for our last park is the War Hill Sports Complex, and this park did have a master plan that was last updated in 2016. So since that time, we've had several changes. We've had several new amenities come into the park that weren't reflected in the older master plan, and we took a look at that as well as some of the needs from our community partner groups and sports organizations. So with that in mind, we started out by recommending the following additions. For Section B, we're recommending two lighted softball fields that can be multi-use and two lighted large baseball fields, and additional restrooms and concessions to support that, a stadium complex featuring baseball and softball fields, redesigned connector road between Long Hill Road and Opportunity Way that would divert traffic around the fields rather than through the park. We added some existing amenities that had been built since the last master plan, including a private indoor pool facility that is currently in operation. We added lighted pickleball and tennis courts, and then we also added the existing community garden and general services maintenance facility, and then parking to support those. And in addition to that, we removed the following items from the 2016 plan, which was one of the large baseball fields in Section A to accommodate increased parking. We removed several multipurpose rectangular fields in that Section E and F, and some of the proposed facilities, like as an indoor sports facility and running center, that have either been identified in other master plans are no longer a priority at this location. So with that being said, we took all three of these plans and shared them with the public. We had two public meetings and a online and in-person survey. We received 174 survey responses with some great feedback. The largest feedback we received was in support of the expanded skate park at the Rec Center, and we also received quite a bit of feedback on off-leash dog areas, pickleball, and hard-surface trails. So the next steps, the last step for this would be, following this meeting, would be to take it to the Board of Supervisors later this month for final approval. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Alistair, at our meeting, our Development Review Committee meeting, you did say for the War Hill that they were going to do a synthetic turf field. Did they drop that?
Yes. Yes, it is a...
Oh, you didn't mention. Okay.
I'm sorry. The two lighted softball fields and two lighted large baseball fields that are in Section B would be synthetic turf.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? I have one, actually. During the DRC meeting in July, it was, Section J-6 was brought up. That's the section on the other side of Long Hill Road.
Right.
As, with no specific uses, possibly tennis courts or something, but some of the uses that are in the main portion could be moved down to there and make more room for other sports fields and so forth. And I think you mentioned you would take that back to the team to discuss.
Corrected.
I guess nothing came of it, but just...
Yeah, yeah, and that is something we took a look at and analyzed a little more. This time, we feel like any development there would, due to the necessary additional infrastructure, parking, restroom facilities, ADA, that it would probably be a little more than what we could tackle here. So we did leave that off at this time, but that is still something that could be looked at in the future, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much.
No action is required, but just information only, and thanks for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If we could get a Planning Commission recommendation to send on to the board, I know they would find that very helpful.
Oh, okay. May I have a motion, please, to recommend the Parks and Rec Master Plan to the board?
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the master plans for War Hill, the Upper County, and the Long Hill.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holt, please call the roll.
Ms. Knoll.
Aye.
Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll go back to the regular order of the agenda. We have time now for public comment. This is a time for residents to speak to the commission on any subject not subject to a public hearing tonight. Speakers have three minutes. Please state your name and address. Would anybody like to address the commission at this time? Were there any speaker cards, Mr. Holt? Thank you very much. None, seeing none. We'll move on to reports of the commission. Ms. Knoll.
The Design Review Committee did not meet this month. Nothing on board.
Mr. Pollster, policy?
Right. The Policy Committee met at 4:00 PM on the 9th of September, 2021. The committee members present were Mr. Craft, Mrs. Leverens, Mr. Haldeman, and Mr. Pollster. Staff members present were Terry Costello, Deputy Zoning Administrator, Kristy Parrish, Zoning Administrator, Paxton County Community Development Assistant, and Josh Crump, Principal Planner. Participating remotely was Max Salaven, Deputy County Attorney. Following a board initiating resolution, the committee discussed Ord 20-0015, zoning ordinance amendments to address the keeping of bees in non-residential Phase III. At its July 14, 2021, meeting, the Policy Committee continued to review and discuss amendments to the zoning ordinance to address the keeping of bees in non-residential districts. The committee reviewed proposed performance standards, which were based on the current county regulations on residential beekeeping, and the committee's discussion at the October 15, 20th Policy Committee meeting. The committee directed staff to draft an ordinance that permits beekeeping and residential planning community R4 commercial use, limited business LB, general business B1, limited business industrial M1, general industry M2, planned unit development PUDR, commercial uses, planned unit development PUDC, research and technology RT, mixed use, and economic opportunity zoning districts. Policy Committee approved the draft ordinance and recommended approval to the Planning Commission by a vote of four to zero.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Pollster? Thank you. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are deemed non-controversial. However, a planning commissioner can pull any item for discussion. The only item for consideration this evening are minutes to the August 4, 2021, regular meeting. Would any commissioner like to pull this item? If not, may I please have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to public hearings. Item number one on public hearing is Z20-0002-2280, Lake Powell Road rezoning. Ms. Haynes, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, good evening. Mr. Benny Zhang of Kaufman and Canoles has applied on behalf of the Smith family to rezone 1.985 acres located at 2280 Lake Powell Road from R8 Rural Residential to R2 General Residential for the purpose of a single-family residential minor subdivision. The property is designated Low Density Residential in both the 2035 and draft 2045 comprehensive plans and is inside the PSA, but per JCSA must use private well and septic systems at this location. Under the current R8 zoning, the minimum lot size is three acres, so a subdivision of the parcel would not be possible. Should it be rezoned to R2, the minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet for lots served by well and septic. Staff reviewed a preliminary plat and found that the proposal can meet the R2 district ordinance requirements. Gross density would be about one unit per acre. Maximum subdivision potential would be one residential lot, and the maximum buyright unit potential would be one single-family unit. Duplexes or multifamily units would require an SUP. Staff estimates an average of one student could be generated and can be adequately accommodated by the school system. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the 2035 and draft 2045 comprehensive plans. The impact of one single-family unit would not adversely impact surrounding development and would be consistent with buyright minor subdivisions currently allowed in R2. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the application to the Board of Supervisors. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also here.
Very much. Any questions of Ms. Haynes? None? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing? Oh, I'm sorry. Any disclosures by commissioners? None? That'll open the public hearing. Any questions or discussions or... I'll close the public hearing. Ask for a discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve JCCZ-20-0002, Lake Powell Road rezoning.
Thank you very much. Mr. Holt, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item two, Z-19-0006 and SUP-19-0005, Hazelwood Farms, the Enterprise Center. Mr. Weisong, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to the commission. Mr. Tim Tran of Kaufman and Canoles has applied on behalf of the Hazelwood Farm property owners to rezone approximately 328 acres from its current zoning of B1 general business and A1 general agriculture to the EO Economic Opportunity zoning district with proffers to allow for up to 2,920,000 square feet of warehouse, industrial, and office use, up to 75,000 square feet of commercial use, and up to 250 residential dwelling units. Accompanying this rezoning is a request for a special use permit to allow for the following uses: apartments, multifamily dwellings, fast food restaurants, truck terminals, the manufacture and processing of textiles and textile products and structures more than 10,000 square feet, heavy equipment sales and service with major repair undercover or screened with landscaping and fencing from adjacent property, machinery sales and service with major repair undercover, a convenience store pursuant to Section 2411 A1, any commercial building or group of buildings that exceeds 10,000 square feet of floor area, any commercial building or group of buildings not including office uses, which generates or would be expected to generate a total of 100 or more additional trips to and from the site during the peak hours of the operation, and buildings additions and expansions requiring an SUP pursuant to Section 2411B of the county code, and extension of public water and sewer facilities up Route 30 and along Route 746 to serve this property. This site is located inside the primary service area and is designated for Economic Opportunity, Barmsville Interchange Area, in both the current 2035 and draft 2045 comprehensive plans. The recommended primary uses for this area include industrial, light industrial, office, medical and research, and/or tourist attraction uses with secondary uses such as retail commercial being limited in amount and type to support the primary uses. Staff finds multiple favorable factors for this application. The proposed uses for this site align with the comprehensive plan. The overall fiscal impact of this project is expected to be positive. The applicant is proposing proffers to mitigate the impacts associated with this rezoning, which include transportation improvements to the surrounding road network, design guidelines for development of the property, use limitation for certain commercial uses, commitments to sustainable residential construction and adequate recreational facilities, and the submittal of a water and sewer master plan prior to site development. Furthermore, the county is proposing conditions to mitigate impacts associated with these special uses. These conditions include enhanced landscape buffering along the Barnes Road, Route 30, Route 746, and Interstate 64 right-of-way, enhanced site design and architectural design, and specific restrictions regarding location and site features for certain specially permitted uses. Staff also finds there are some factors that are unfavorable for this application. These includes unmitigated impacts on the school system, affordable and workforce housing not being committed to as part of the application, and the project timeline not being guaranteed to align with the Economic Opportunity Construction Phasing Guidelines. Overall, staff finds that the proposed rezoning and special use permit will not negatively impact surrounding development, and that the proffers and proposed conditions will help mitigate impacts generated by the proposal. Staff also finds that the development of the property is consistent with the recommended land use in the current comp plan and the draft 2045 comp plan. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors, subject to the proposed proffers and SUP conditions. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have for staff, and the applicant team is here tonight as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff? Ms. Leverens?
Yes. I understand that there is an incompatibility with the build-out plan having to do with the amount of commercial space versus the residential space.
So the... Yes, one second. So because this property is being proposed to be rezoned to Economic Opportunity, there is a recommended construction phasing policy for the property, and that policy requires for building permits for 20% of the primary workplace square footage as proposed on the master plan to be issued prior to commencing any residential construction. The applicant's actually proposing and proffering that that would be met by a million square feet of non-residential being issued to CO before any residential certificates are issued. What is not guaranteed are the second and third part of that phasing policy, which states that a CO must be issued for at least 50% of the primary workplace square footage as designated on the master plan prior to building permits being issued for any residential unit above 50%. And number three, which is prior to the issuance of building permits for construction of the final 10% of the residential units, any certificate of occupancy must be issued for at least 90% of the primary workforce square footage as shown on the master plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? I have one, and it has to do with the email exchange we had today, and thanks for your help. But my understanding from the community impact statement, item number 11 on page 12, is that once 1 million square feet of commercial, industrial, and warehouse space is built, that the applicant can then build all 250 housing units. Do I understand that correctly?
Yes. With the proffered language, that would be possible.
And my other question has to do, and I know you answered it in your email, but just for broader distribution, the fiscal impact statement, the fiscal impact analysis is based on full buildout of commercial, industrial, and warehouse and 250 housing units, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And the positive fiscal impact, I'm sorry, the commercial fiscal impact at full buildout is 1,653, and the negative, there's a negative fiscal impact for residential, which I can't find right at the moment, but the total fiscal impact is $643,000 at complete buildout. But if only 1 million square feet is built, and so the total for commercial is 3 million square feet, basic 2,995, so if you're taking out the positive fiscal impact of 2/3 of the commercial portion, it no longer covers the negative fiscal impact of the residential, if I'm doing my chicken scratch properly here. And I come out with a negative fiscal impact of $415,000 if that eventuality were to occur. And of course, we don't know how much is going to be built out in the long run, but conception, I know you can't validate my numbers, I can't either, but conceptually, that flows, doesn't it? I mean, because if not all the commercial space is built, then not all the positive attributes, positive fiscal attributes can be included, and the fiscal impact analysis, fiscal impact benefits in the analysis no longer hold up, conceptually.
Conceptually, that's possible. I mean, it's also true that the commercial could be built out, and, you know, honestly, we can't predict what's going to happen, and we do just review the fiscal impact based on full buildout, which does show the positives.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, Mr. O'Connor?
I just have two. Mr. Weisong, how are you this evening?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Well, thanks. Two quick questions. One, can you just define terminal per the ordinance? I know the proffer says no truck stop, but we've had some correspondence from citizens, so I think it would just be helpful to explain what truck terminal is defined as in the ordinance.
Certainly. Per the zoning ordinance, a truck terminal is a storage facility for the unloading, transferring, and storing of goods and materials being transported by a truck. A truck terminal may include facilities for the repair and servicing of trucks.
Thanks. And then second question I have, the SUP is good for 60 months. So if there is construction of a C store or a gas station or something like that, that makes the entire SUP valid, correct?
Correct.
So then it would, the 60 months would then be gone. Is that correct?
Yes, the SUP would be authorized to continue.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Croft?
Good evening, Mr. Weisong. Just a question, and I'll probably follow up with the applicant as well, but one of the attachments in the staff report is listed as a master plan, but I, when I looked at it, there's a very much lack of specificity in the master plan. For example, there are land areas marked out, but the truck terminal, for instance, could go in land area 1, 2, or 5, and we don't know what the capacity of the truck terminal is. The application also says, well, any number of these businesses, industrial or what have you, such as textile manufacturing, could go into this project. And not to belabor the point, but what I'm getting at is, it appears like there's a lot of vagaries in this application, and I understand that part of the issue is trying to... And I understand that part of the issue is trying to attract businesses. But on the other hand, you know, an important part of the planning commission's job is not only to assess whether an application is consistent with zoning and the comprehensive plan, but also to assess the impact on the county. And I'm having a real struggle with this when, to me, it looks more like a conceptual master plan than an actual master plan because of its lack of specificity. Could you elaborate a little bit on the staff's assessment of whether that is an acceptable master plan?
Certainly. So for larger projects like this, and I will let the applicant speak to sort of the business thinking behind some of it. It's not unprecedented to have a larger master plan that's showing the land areas. And then in each land area is showing the use codes for what's going to be there, which is the approach that was taken here for the Enterprise Center. I think Stonehouse is an example of another large project where you don't have the exact parking or structures of where things are going to be. But you do have the land areas with the land use codes and the density caps. And that's the approach that the applicant team has taken here tonight. Like you said, we do have those conditions that specify where certain uses could go. But staff did work with the applicant team to get this as specific as it could be, given the information they have. And certainly, we did evaluate it against the zoning ordinance and the submittal requirements. And it does meet that requirement for a master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Weisong. Ms. Leverance?
A question that brings up, and this could be tapping into your memory. When Newtown was proposed many, many years ago, was it as vague as this?
That, I do not know the answer to, and I'm going to look to Paul here in case he has that memory.
Newtown was a little bit different and a little bit unique. If you remember, that was really sort of rezoned in multiple pieces. I think it used to be R8, All Is One. And then as the various sections came online, there were multiple master plans and multiple sections and multiple sets of proffers for each of the sections. I think within that instance, I don't recall all of the details, but certainly that has a very different character in terms of the mix of uses, a lot more residential. You know, I think as Mr. Weisong correctly said, I think in instances like this, and I know the applicant team will give you all more information, when you have this much acreage and this amount of square footage, you know, this, the site's going to develop over quite a bit of time. It's not all going to come out of the ground in the next two years. It's not going to all come out of the ground in the next three years. It's very much a long-term vision. And so with our larger, I call them blob master plans, you've seen these frequently, again, across the street at Stonehouse. We've got similar ones, Colonial Heritage, Ford's Colony, for example. Stonehouse Commerce Park, I mean, that's sort of integral to the Stonehouse master plan anyway. But that's sort of analogous in terms of the size of some of the industrial base that we're doing here. So, you know, again, for some of the larger developments, it's pretty consistent. It's easier to do if you have one building on a few acres to develop detailed level plan, show the building, show where the parking is going to go. Can't really do that at this scale.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions, Mr. Weisong? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any disclosures by the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I discussed this case, an overview with the applicant, Mr. Tran.
Mr. Polster?
I've also discussed this project with Mr. Tran.
Dido.
I also had a conversation with Mr. Tran. Thank you very much. With that, we'll open the public hearing tonight. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Thanks, Bill. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Tim Tran, attorney with Coffman &amp; Cannolles, 4801 Courthouse Street here in James City County. It's my privilege to be here tonight on behalf of the applicant team. I'll make some brief introductions of the team so you know who's here. First and foremost, the Hazelwood family. We have representatives Larry and Debbie Hazelwood here. Their brother RM is not with us. I'm getting conflicting reports. He's the character of the family, and Debbie said he couldn't be trusted to wear shoes. Larry said he was too cheap to spend the gas money to drive up from Carolina. So I'm not exactly sure what the truth is, but he couldn't be with us tonight. We've got Jason Grimes and Arch Marston, the civil engineering team for the project, and John Hopkey in the back as our landscape, or our architect and land planner. And then certainly Dexter Williams, who couldn't be with us tonight. But he has imbued Arch, Jason, and me with all the knowledge that he has about traffic issues, and we'll do our best to respond to those. I think you're well oriented to the project location, but the map is here if we need to refer back to it. This is the conceptual plan, and this speaks somewhat to Mr. Crop's comments. You know, a master plan is a conceptual plan. You know, the difference, a master plan and a detailed plan is an actual engineered site plan for development. So maybe the level of concept is troubling, but it is a conceptual plan, and this is part of it, and this is the portion of it in the design guidelines. Just to speak a little bit about what I think is the opportunity that's presented to the county in this application. The Hazelwood family came to the project team about almost 10 years ago. And they said, "Look, we're three siblings. We're of one mind about most things. We're not excited about investing the time and resources that it will take to position this property for its best use." But we grew up on it. There's nostalgia there. We have a sense of obligation. And we don't want to leave it to our children to, and to chance, you know, to see how this property develops. That we want to put in place a vision. We don't have the time left and energy to develop it ourselves. But we want to lock down a vision that will ensure the orderly and attractive development of the property, commensurate with its prominence in the county. It's a gateway at the very first interchange entering James City County from the west. And it has special opportunity, we think, for both the family and the county. And they want to lock down, you know, a way for that to happen and be realized while they still have the control over that. They are proposing, not that it's not obvious, but, you know, what is essentially a business park with primarily private funding. This is the type of park that most localities, in fact, James City County has made some of its own investments in, with taxpayer dollars to create. Just ask for some consideration in the opportunity that represents. This is different than many proposals, truly economic development. There are a lot of proposals that come forward that have fiscally positive impacts and are, represent a mix of uses. But what, if you talk to the James City County Economic Development Staff, if you talk to economic development staff at the state level, what they are really seeking, what they consider economic development, and it is not retail and commercial uses, it's the business uses. It's, you know, office campuses. It is light industrial, you know, warehousing and distribution. It's manufacturing jobs. Those are the projects that bring in tax dollars, higher wages, spending, you know, by the employees and tax revenue to the locality to offset and help reduce the burden on the residential tax base. The commercial and residential uses that are part of this application are secondary and mandated to be so by the EO ordinance. They are in the plan exclusively because the EO concept that was established on this property by the comp plan and the ordinance specify a variety of uses, a mix of uses, and certain percentages and whatnot. They're also intended to be a buffer of sorts to transition from a more heavily industrial business park atmosphere to the west and the sort of character that exists along Old Stage Road, which is residential and commercial right there at the interchange with Route 30, at the intersection with Route 30. And a part, a big part of why we're here is that the Hazelwood family's done extensive research in how to position this property to attract those top three users, those manufacturing, light industrial, office users, that everybody is chasing. And VDP, which is essentially the state's Office of Economic Development, it is the gateway, in Virginia at least, for anybody trying to attract those users. And they have a tiering system. It's very rational. It helps sort out the wheat from the chaff, those properties that are just ideas and whatnot, from ones that can really happen. And that will be attractive to the candidates that they are courting. And you have to make, there's a lot of investment that's required to get to a place on that tiering system. It's tier four, is when you first sort of achieve visibility and when the VDP staff will really step out and help promote your property to these prospects. And it will give us and the county the best opportunity to bring in, to partner, and to bring in some of these users. Tier four entails, and I won't go into everything, but an extensive amount of due diligence in terms, and just basics that like title, full title examination and a title report, an alta-level survey, wetlands delineation, phase one environmental site assessment, soils testing, cultural resources, inventories, rare, threatened, endangered species. All these things, the Hazelwood family has begun, and these are, as you imagine, on a 328-acre piece, property not cheap. But they have begun over this intervening decade to procure those. We've done the title search. We've done the survey. We've got the full wetlands delineation core confirmed. It's just been renewed. That's how long ago we started this process. So the point to, in sharing all that with you, is just some of the private investment that's gone into and continues to go into trying to make this a reality and to score on that tiering system at a place where we can, this can become a reality. The other two elements that I haven't talked about are zoning. You have to have zoning in place to be, to move from tier two to tier three. You have to have zoning in place. We're at tier two now, by the way. To get to tier three, you have to have zoning. And then tier four, you got to have utilities. And so it is, you know, our intention to try to accomplish the zoning. That's the big motivation for seeking this. And what drives us to pursue it with, you know, without end-users in tow. And then also, you know, trying to secure water and sewer to the property after this would be the next phase. The last sort of key point that I think makes this project unique, and we touched on it, is that it's in an ideal location. And certainly, you know, we can debate whether it's the best location and whether there's, you know, it has every feature you would want in a business park of this night. But it certainly is, I think, unarguably, in a good one. It's immediately adjacent to the interstate. And that sound just rolls off the tongue. I say, "What does that mean?" Well, it means that, you know, if we're proposing to bring, in particular, truck traffic with manufacturing and light industrial users to the site, they're not driving through the county. They're not driving through our neighborhoods. They're getting off the interstate and turning right into our project. And that's something that's unique. There are any number of business parks that we can all think of, both in the county and without, where those types of uses are attractive and sought after. But they're driving through streets that really aren't well-suited to that type of traffic. They're driving down the same streets that our buses are driving down to go to school. They're driving past schools. They're driving past commercial areas and things of that nature. So putting it at an interstate interchange is a unique feature and a unique opportunity. Close proximity to the port. And I say, "Well, we're not all that close to the port." But we've just expanded, as you know, all the way to the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel, the interstate. And the, I think it's 2025, the new tunnel lanes are supposed to come online. We'll hope that they can keep that schedule. But all of that would have the potential to drive the interest in this site for that type of manufacturing and warehousing usage. It would free up and allow the truck times coming from the port to be much shorter and more desirable, not to mention, you know, the federal trade zone that this property is located in. It also represents fairly modest density. And I know it's, you know, you might get a chuckle out of that, Tim, right? 3 million, you know, square feet of business uses is modest density. And I would respectfully submit that it is. Arch and Jason can tell you that the property is suitable, fortunately, part of its attractiveness for this type of work, to accommodate more development, more economic development uses than was proposed. But the Hazelwoods were very clear in their direction to the team is that, "Look, we don't want to blow this out. We don't want to, you know, propose something that is, you know, pushes the envelope. It's, we want it to be something that will fit, be complementary to the area that we can, that where traffic is manageable. It doesn't blow out the traffic in the interstate or interchange and make things unworkable for the surrounding community. It's got to fit with what's here and the improvements that we're committing to make." We actually backed into the development amount different. Normally, you come with what is the maximum amount the property will support, and then you figure out the traffic. We did the opposite. We had Dexter Williams run some iterations of development to figure out what a reasonable traffic plan would look like. What could the adjacent roads accommodate with some reasonable upgrades and improvements, some traffic signals, things that are probably warranted anywhere. I won't say warranted, because that's a technical term. Probably needed or desired anyway, or already planned. This may just accelerate when they happen. How do we do that? And then, and get to, what does that look like in terms of development? So that is how we arrived at the 3 million square feet. And to put our money where our mouth is on that, the cap, which is in the staff report and in the proffers and in the conditions, is not only a commercial square footage, it's a trip generation as well. We propose both so that, you know, if there's some variation, you get a really low square footage user, but it's a high-traffic user that we're limited in how much we can do, both by square footage and traffic. It's whichever comes first. So it's a feature of the proposal. And lastly, you know, that it's well buffered. We just, significant mature trees along the interstate. Your staff drives a very hard bargain about the buffering of Barnes Road along Old Stage Road, things they want to see there, both in terms of community character, core plantings, street trees, and multi-use paths. So it will be a very attractive and wellbuffed project. Certainly, we think with the proffered design guidelines. I won't go into great detail, and John Hopkey is much more articulate than us, but just want to scroll briefly through some of the images. These are from the design guidelines, so you will see those. These are, you know, office use images, you know, that the design guidance specifically speak to in terms of what would be an attractive and appropriate design concept. This is the standard that proposed users would be held to. This is the, some images that will be familiar to you for the commercial center, for that commercial node. And then these are some images we tried to pull from the community, from, you know, around Virginia with John's blessing as to, you know, what does the industrial park look like? And this is an entrance to one of Carmax's business parks. As you can see, you know, the landscaping, the boulevard concept with the street trees. That's what has evolved from the design guidelines and the commitment. Here's a copy of the CnF Bank Building and Stonehouse Commerce Park. These are all things that would fit within the design guidelines and be consistent with the design guidelines. These are types of buildings and uses that would match up with what we've proposed. And I believe this is another. This is the Liberty Trust Building. Those are all of my prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer your questions or speak to some of the questions you've already raised. Thank you.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Tran, Mr. Polster?
Just a follow-up. You mentioned the Virginia Business Ready Site Program, and that you're currently at a tier three, which you're...
Tier two.
Oh, you're tier two.
Yes. Tier five being the highest.
But you're trying to get to tier three if you got the zoning in place.
Zoning would allow us to get to tier three, yes, sir, along with a number of other things. But yes, that's the missing link, yes, sir.
And if I understand the program correctly, if you did get approved for tier... And if I understand the program correctly, if you did get approved for tier three, then you need to be able to talk about how you're going to get to tier four with the cost and things of that sort. And of course, the tier four says that you're going to have the infrastructure in place, water, sewer, electrical, within 12 months. Are you guys looking at that?
Twelve to eighteen months. We have been, really from the beginning of the process, we've been looking at that. Because of VDP's guidance, that that would be essential part of positioning this to be competitive.
And the estimated cost for utilities, sewer and water?
We haven't gotten, I think, to a number of what, you know, it would specifically cost to bring water and sewer to the site. So what we have done, maybe I can tell you, is first of all, identify where it is, where it's located. The closest place for the enterprise center is at the entrance to the Stonehouse Commerce Park, no surprise. And to figure out what the size of those lines are, what the capacity in the system is. And then to try to determine first, you know, what our demand would be, right? So because we have, you know, a variety of uses that we would need to program in to figure out what our demand would be. There are uses, like a brewery, for example, that would be very intense water users and probably ones we couldn't support because of the water demand, candidly. But then there are more modest, you know, just basic factory and light industrial users. So programming what our water demand would be. We have begun to do that with JCSA, developed water model, and Jason, and Arch can probably speak to that better than me. The other factor, which may be a surprise to some of you, is all those businesses out there that are currently out there at that intersection, at the interchange are on private well and septic. McDonald's, for example, is on private well and septic. So we would expect they would want or need to tap into that, those lines as they come by. There are other undeveloped properties, large and potentially pretty significant undeveloped properties that would be along the corridor where we would be extending water and sewer. What do we need to plan for in terms of capacity to accommodate those uses? And then how do we share costs, right? Because it can't be a windfall, right, to?
Well, I don't know. I'm just trying to find out. Your community impact statement does lay out exactly how much water you're going to use in the capacity, which got chopped off by the JCSA. And so let's just say ballpark figure is it takes a million bucks to run it up to Stonehouse. Are you all prepared or are you going to let the developer do that?
Good question. And maybe I'll let the Hazelwood answer that. I don't want to. We, let me say it this way. We, and Larry and Debbie, correct me where I go straight. We are 100% aware that in order for development to happen out there, the type of development that we want and that we've committed to, we've got to have water and sewer to the site. It's got to be there. In order for the property to be marketable and to attract those users, we believe water and sewer has got to be there. Which means we are very likely going to be responsible for getting it there. How we do that, you know, we haven't entirely resolved. But it is, we are absolutely aware, 100% that we need to find a way to get it there in order for the site to be marketable for these uses.
I'm happy to hear that. And I guess that gets to the two proffers that are in there. You want to are asking to be able to get water and utility, but with no indication of how that's going to happen. But then there's the stipulation that Mr. O'Counter brought up of the 60 months, of which the sewer and water doesn't count. And so when that water comes in, couldn't, it may not happen in those first five years. You may not have it there for some of the other S U P requirements. And so I understand the marketability for that program, the Virginia Business Program, and getting to the tier four. And as far as I know, the county only has one place that's on that list, and that's the Stonehouse Commerce Center. And that's where the water terminal is. So.
I think there's only one site left.
Yeah. But my concern is, is to see the development according to that and not have it go to somebody else. And I'd feel a lot better about this if there were some assurances in the proffer associated with the sewer and water, especially getting to tier four. I mean, you start to get state support. It's just not this county in economic development. But anyhow, that's not a question. Sorry.
Understood. And Mr. Polster, I mean, we get it, the reluctance to, I mean, just, you know, let's just be brutally honest. I mean, the reluctance to proffer that we will pay for the extension of water and sewer means that, you know, in addition to all of the expenditures that we have made to date, that we would be making a considerable one. I don't know the number, but let, you know, let's say, I think we all agree it's significant, which would end up being a windfall to other existing businesses and undeveloped properties. And we would have to work out some way to recoup those, that, so that it didn't work out to be, you know, a windfall at our expense. And that is what is, would impede us from making that proffer. Because we have to work that out, and that's not easy. But we know we have to do it.
Ms. Leverens?
Could you remind me how far it is from the interchange with I-64 to the entrance to the Spine Road?
I'm just trying to get back to the aerial photograph. So this is the entrance to the Spine Road here versus, you know, some, one of these interstate access points?
That's, okay.
I don't know the exact distance. I'm sure one of our engineers can answer it. Ms. Leverens, would you, I'm sorry, would you just let us know exactly where you want to know the distance? Is it just from Route 30 down to the main entrance?
From the actual point where trucks might get off of the interstate.
Okay.
Down to the.
So Jason, I think it would be from the on or off ramp here on Interstate 64
Down to the Spine Road.
To the intersection and then down to the main entrance.
I'm told it's about 1,500 feet, just so people can hear, sorry.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Let me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, Mr. Trent. You know, as I mentioned on the phone, I'm struggling with lack of specificity in some areas. And I understand that the end users in many cases have to be identified. But I noticed that there are certain restrictions that have been agreed to in order to minimize the impacts to Upper County Park and to neighboring businesses and residences. For example, one convenience store with fuel sales, one. And that is going to go into land area three. One bank with a drive-through, that also is going to go into land area three. But then we start looking at textile manufacturing, land area one, two, or five. Does that mean it could be one, two, and five if you identified several end users for that? Or is the anticipation in the master plan that there would be one type of that manufacturing business?
Very good question, Mr. Craft. And, you know, what I, what I like to say, I guess, is, you know, we did, as I mentioned, proposed the kind of the urban cores. It's, I think it's a misnomer for what actually is being proposed, but it's the term from the ordinance to sort of buffer the more industrial uses from Old Stage Road. We also proposed, it's about 30 some acres, I believe, in this area surrounding Upper County Park, which we proposed is open space. The, and undevelopable and disconnected from the remainder of the property. To speak to your question, it is, in our mind, possible for there to be multiple textile manufacturers. And I'm certainly biased, and so I acknowledge that. But I truly do believe, for whatever it is worth, that the S U P uses that are proposed, certainly the industrial S U P uses that are proposed, are not uses to be afraid of and really represent sort of antiquated zoning ordinance terms. And, you know, textile manufacturing in 2021, and I do a lot of environmental work, and I've worked on some textile manufacturing facilities in New England from the 1800s. And yes, they have a bad reputation, but they're a cleaner industry in 2021 than a lot of the uses that are by right in the zoning ordinance, than just basic, some of your basic manufacturers, some of your tech manufacturing that everybody seeks to attract to their locality. So it is S U P use, so we apply, we don't want to exclude a textile manufacturer coming here, but they're not anymore, they don't present any more impacts, I would humbly and respectfully submit, than any other manufacturer, maybe less than other manufacturers. Same thing for a truck terminal. You know what fits within the definition of a truck terminal? Walmart Distribution Center. And that's a truck terminal, right? It's just a warehousing and logistics facility. And that's what it is. It's a place where trucks come, deliver goods, they're stored, and then redistributed on demand via trucks. It's a warehousing and distribution. It's a logistics facility. It's the type of businesses that the county and Office of Economic Development is trying to recruit to other places that it's allowed by right, in places like N M one. We're proposing it here and proposing to put not only limitations on, you know, how much can be built, but limitations on what it can look like, you know, design guidelines, buffering and things that are more substantial than other business parks. Business parks within the county, more restrictions on those types of uses. So, you know, the other, another S U P type use is, you know, machinery, heavy equipment, sales and service. I mean, that's, I mean, I don't know that we've all been to Ashland before, but you drive by Carter Cat Machinery, Sales and Service Dealership on the left. That's what we're proposing. Now, ours would not be allowed to be visible from the interstate because we have committed to buffering and that. But that's what you can expect to see. That's not a use to be afraid of. I mean, that's what we want. We want that tax revenue here. We want those jobs. We want, you know, those, those sales to be occurring in our county if we can, if we can attract those types of users. We recognize that, you know, because the ordinance is what it is, and we have to respect that. So we have specially treated those S U P uses in the design guidelines, even though we don't think as a practical matter they're more dangerous or more risky to the county. But we've respected the fact that the ordinance says they may be and tried to address that with special terms and conditions that those future users will be judged by, in some of those pictures that you saw. For the commercial S U P uses, you know, the conditions that staff has proposed should look very familiar to you. I mean, I know they look familiar to me because they're from cases that I've worked on elsewhere in the county. They're the same commercial conditions that applied, for example, at Lightfoot Marketplace, which is very, in my humble opinion, very attractively developed property. That's the same standard by which our commercial uses would be held. So I know it seems a little different, but in reality, I challenge those to, you know, to point out a substantive and material difference that makes the county more vulnerable here with the proffers and the design guidelines and the traffic requirements. It's another component of this that's unique. Because our uses are, have some variability, mostly the industrial uses, the more business uses, we have proposed, you know, progressive traffic analyses. It's not like we've come up with one traffic study, it's fixed, these are the improvements we're going to make, this is what we do. We recognize that that will change over time. And the only way, in good faith, to propose a plan that will work and mitigate traffic over time, as this develops, is to do updated traffic studies and to implement the recommendations. So we have proffered to do updated traffic studies as we get site plans approved and then to implement the recommendations of those traffic studies, which we don't know yet what they'll be. I mean, we know what they are today, but they may be different in the future. And we've committed to those future requirements, whatever they may be. So.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. Any other questions of Mr. Trent?
Sorry. Good evening, Mr. Trent. How are you? I'm not sure if it's for Mr. Trent or if it's for staff, but is there the option or the ability, I'm just trying to scroll through the proffers here. But what prevents the development of a fast food or a convenience store here that, like what we have out there, that exchange from putting in a septic or a well?
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, Tim. What I will say is this to one of the earlier comments, you know, and just in terms of the phasing of the uses. We had proposed this as an apartment community to speak to the residential element of the EO concept, the Economic Opportunity Zone concept. And we proposed it to be a single apartment complex, not, you know, the 250 units for those in the industry. That's the standard size of a single apartment community for, if you look at, you know, what exists in Quarter Path, the Bonaventure Project there, Boulevards, those are, you know, in the two, 250 unit range apartment. It would be built at all at one time. And so to phase it, you know, in small increments would be infeasible. And we recognize that we would need to have a material amount of commercial uses and business uses there before we, you know, we should be allowed to develop it. We did not want that to be some leading project. And we chose a million square feet because we thought that was meaningful. And, you know, that, we do think the commercial is likely to lead before the industrial uses, Tim. That's what we expect to see. We expect that urban residential or that urban core right here, the commercial side of that, to be what leads the development. We suspect that will happen first, that will, you know, that will be the first development to occur. And then we will proceed to try to, you know, get the users, end users to commit to the, you know, the larger industrial sites.
That I understand, but my, what I'm trying to clarify is, you know, what prevents a C store from being constructed, which then kicks in this entire S U P, you know, and that C store could be constructed on a well and septic versus having water and sewer connected to the site?
The Economic Opportunity Zoning District requires for uses to be served by a public water and sewer, so that wouldn't be permitted.
Okay, thanks.
We've got five years to get the water and sewer. That's what that means.
Other questions?
This may not be answerable. We're talking about public water servicing an operation of this size, the potential size and scope and so on and so forth with the variety of different uses. Has there been any discussion or assessment of the amount of water required to have this thing be fully operational, especially in light of some of the pressures that have been on the county with the drawdown of the aquifer and pressure to come up with other water sources? And I guess my question is, is that sort of consideration taken into account as to what the draw will actually be?
No, fair question. And I do believe that has been addressed, but I would be out of my bailiwick in answering. I'd ask Jason or Arch if they could speak to confirming, you know, they have worked with JCSA to try and wrap our arms around what the water demand would be relative to capacity. I think the feasibility has been established, but I'd leave Arch and Jason to speak to it.
We've been in dialogue with JCSA for probably four or five years. And we've done, taking what the county uses on a, from the Health Department, actually, based on demands for industrial, commercial properties and done it on an acreage basis, which is a, what this Health Department uses for overall, like Planning District Commissions use for big picture planning. So we've run through that exercise. We've preliminary sized lines and brought it down, you know, from the industrial park. The county has been given our numbers, and again, it was four or five years ago. Actually, neither the gentleman Danny Poe or Mike Vergakis is with us anymore that we went through that process with. But there was plenty of demand, there was flow available from their model to support that analysis. And again, like Tim said, if you had a brewery or something like that, then we might have to go and regroup because that would be a larger water demand than those kind of planning numbers see. Thanks, Mr. Marson. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does.
I've got a follow on on that thing for the staff for that. Is, I think, I understand what Mr. Marson said in terms of the study, because that's in the community, that's in the community impact statement. All the numbers are there. But I think what Mr. Craft is getting at is the county has got a upper limit in terms of the amount of water it's drawing. So when JCSA chopped off on this, did they consider that upper limit for the? So when JCSA chopped off on this, did they consider that upper limit for the water withdrawal?
My assumption is they do that for every review on legislative cases, given they provide the water and sewer impact analysis.
That gets at his point. Thank you.
I just had one more for the applicant. So I don't know if this is Mr. Trent or Mr. Marston. Talked about what, that this won't be as intensely developed as it could be. And I didn't, I didn't capture it. I don't know if you, if you addressed it, but could you say what, could you reiterate what the potential intensity of that development could be versus what's proposed?
I do not know the answer to that question, Tim, but I can certainly ask Arch and Jason to speak to it. Just to give you some frame of reference. You know, the Walmart distribution facility, and I, I use that only because it's well-known. I mean, it's, you know, it was a big coup to get them here and, and it's a longstanding facility. It's about a million square feet. So that's, that one business is one-third of what we're proposing be developed here. It's just, you know, it's two of those and we're, you know, two-thirds of the way to, to, to eating up all the capacity. And, and then the alternative trigger, just again, to reiterate while they're, it sounds like they're trying to figure out the answer to your question, is the traffic cap. So even if we develop much less intensely, I mean, it is conceivable that we get a use that is high-traffic generating. And it's only a million square feet. If it pushes that traffic count number to its max, that's it. We're tapped out at a million square feet.
Do you want to know the total numbers again, Mr. O'Connor?
He wants to know what, he knows what our total number is. It's just shy of three million. He wants to know what the max, you know, we, that is a modest number. That's less than the full development potential of the property. We, we backed into that number.
What is the, what is the max number we could do? I don't have that number available. That also depends on how many floors you go home.
I think, let's have an engineering crew here. Tim, I think to your point, and kind of adding on to what Tim had brought up when he was talking about maximum. I mean, there are uses we could put here that would generate the need for updating the cloverleaf of the interchange. So what we did is we kind of said, what can the major infrastructure out here support? From a water standpoint, from a traffic standpoint. Obviously, there's traffic improvements proposed, but we didn't want to go in there and say, hey, let's, we're, we're going to redo the interstate interchange, make a four-way cloverleaf, all these things. So what we kind of did is we looked at it not necessarily, kind of to back it down. We said, what, what can it support? What are reasonable improvements we could make to this area? And make sure that that makes sense with the development potential of the property. So I think we didn't, it's not like we went in there and said, hey, if we put 10 million square feet, what would happen? And sometimes that's what we do. We try to fi- figure out what size buildings we could put on a piece of property and then figure out what the impacts are and then just address the impacts. This one, we've kind of worked, as Tim mentioned, backwards from what can the infrastructure support reasonably and make the, make the project economically feasible. Thanks, appreciate it.
Questions? Last call. Thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation. Next, we have time for speakers to address this from the residents. Speakers are free to speak for five minutes on this subject. Please state your name and address for the record. The first speaker card I have is Ms. Darlene Previs.
Could you please put the conceptual plan back up? I know this is going to be a hard. Thank you so much for your time today. My name is Darlene Previs and I live at 211 Old Stage Road. I'm one driveway down from this development. This is looking from my yard. I'm at the corner of, I'm one driveway over from the corner of Old Stage and Leisure Road. Progress is inevitable, inevitable, but I agree, and I agree with that, but I want to tell you a story. The story is ours. My husband was raised in Upper James City County. And before we met, he had not traveled further than next head in his whole life. He's spent a large portion of his life in the very neighborhood we live in now. He was a Norwich Roadrunner in elementary school. And he traveled almost two hours on a school bus to get to James Blair. He had a fort in the woods behind our house and did things with all of his friends that young teenage boys do. We lived in Jamestown for many years and had a beautiful home there. But his grandmother passed away in 2015 and we were offered her property. They believed there would, that we would probably say no because our home was perfect for us. But they knew that, we knew that his parents lived really close by on Barnes Road and they were aging. So we felt we needed to consider it. We drove up to the house and it was a mess. Rotten wood from termites, overgrown landscaping, and it was only 1,000 square feet. But then we looked at the land and it, how it moved, and it just kind of called us. I was raised in the country and I knew I was home. He told stories of how his first job was at the Shell Station at the corner of Route 30. Used to be a Texaco and he pumped gas there when he was 10 years old. His second job was at Twin Oaks Campground, which is now Upper County Park. He used to ride his bike there every day. I looked at the porch with the columns nearly eaten away from termites and knew that that porch was calling for rocking chairs. Fast forward to now, the view from my porch is the one that you see right now. And it's my favorite place on a snowy day when the world is quiet and the clouds make a rainbow. That will be one driveway away from 250 apartments cluttering the land that we all came to Upper James City County to escape. We recently hosted a wedding on this property. It was the daughter of one of my husband's friends that he used to play in the fort with many years ago. She felt that same attachment to our property from her many visits and she wanted to get married on our porch. This proposed plan will leave a far greater impact than just ruining my view. It presents safety concerns, traffic nightmares, exhausts county resources, creates noise and school overcrowding, and it destroys what we all moved here for, to escape the hustle and bustle of the city life. I've never driven through Newport News, Fredericksburg, Northern Virginia and thought to myself, wow, I wish I lived here. But that's what all of my friends say when they come to my home. Progress may be inevitable, but there is very many flaws in the plan, many unanswered questions. And I believe that controlled, well-planned progress is much more preferable. And this is not completely well-planned. There are many flaws and we, that we would like to address with you tonight. And we ask that you not send this to the Board of Supervisors until more work is done to make sure that this progress is done well. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Sharon Oakley.
Hello, thank you for your time this evening. Sharon Oakley, 1-855-5 New Kent Highway, which is also known as Old Stage Road. I just wanted to specifically address the traffic safety issues that myself and other members of the community feel are not adequately addressed in the traffic impact analysis and/or are simply incorrect. There's some numbers that I have some questions about. So while the staff analysis found the traffic impact is mitigated, there are concerns. Firstly, probably not aware, between Farmer's Drive, which is a quarter mile into New Kent County, and Interstate 64 has been a ongoing traffic nightmare for years. We have a 400% above state average injury and fatality rate on that stretch of road already. And it took a double fatality almost a year ago exactly for VDOT to finally respond to the community concerns. And their response was a five-mile-an-hour reduction, not adequate. And in the summertime, especially when there is a lot of traffic on 64, Route 30 is the default alternate. I can't tell you how many Saturdays in the summer it is literally crawling for miles down 30. And that is before we add 24,000 trips generated by this development. 24,000 is the estimate that DRW submitted. Add 24,000 to the numbers we have already. I think you can see our concern. I'll also note that while being directly at an interchange is great, truck drivers don't always do as they're told. And Route 33 in New Kent County is a great example of that. The traffic analysis also failed to take into account unintended upstream consequences for a number of locations, particularly Barnes Road, Old Stage Road, and Mary Oaks Lane. There's a lot of traffic that, in order to avoid the signals, may be diverted onto these roads. And particularly related to Enterprise Center, Old Stage Road connecting to 30 and then Mary Oaks to 60 are likely to see a large amount of spillover traffic. And neither of these roads are even mentioned in the traffic analysis at all. Also, the proposed solution for Barnes Road traffic is inadequate, forcing everyone to turn right to then make a U-turn to head towards West Point. That traffic volume is not, that's not a sustainable solution. There simply must be more and better planning for the traffic impact that is likely. And the, the upstream spillover onto these other roads and areas really must be addressed. Lastly, the lack of provision and means for pedestrians and cyclists to move between these two parcels is very troubling. This goes against the county's regional bikeways plan and simply forces more cars onto the road. If there's no way for people to move over 64 without getting into their car, that's just adding to the traffic problem. And it also makes it an unattractive area to live. Upper County Park has wonderful mountain bike trails and, you know, people that live in Stonehouse might want to access them via bike. With this development, they will no longer be able to do so. In conclusion, I believe there are a number of traffic-related points that need to be examined much more closely before rezoning is recommended. And economic development is great. I have nothing against it, but it absolutely should not come at the expense of the community's safety. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Scott May?
Good evening. Thank you for your time to speak this evening. I just have three succinct points I'd like to make. Scott May is my name. I live at 2624 Meadow Lake Drive in the Meadow Lake subdivision. My property backs up to Upper County Park. Three points here. First is community awareness. There is very little awareness in the community or the surrounding community about this massive proposed project. I've talked to many residents as early as even yesterday and they had no idea that this was even being proposed or going on. So, and also I'd like to add that not one person that I've talked to in the last three weeks or so is in favor of this. Everyone has been essentially vehemently opposed to this proposal. Second, I'd like to talk about just the sheer magnitude of this Enterprise Center. And evaluating this information over the last, I haven't had a lot of time to evaluate it, but I've been going through the information packet and evaluating that. And I really didn't understand what 3 million square feet of commercial space felt like. You talk about federal budgets and the billions and trillions of dollars. Nobody knows what that means. So I had to really try to understand what does 3 million square feet look like? And it's interesting that the brewery's been brought up a couple of times this evening. Well, that space would essentially be built out to the equivalent of two and a half Anheuser-Busch breweries. Like, that is a significant, significant development. And if you haven't had a chance to go into the Anheuser-Busch Brewery and tour that, everyone's been into a Lowe's. A typical Lowe's department store is about 112,000 square feet. So the equivalent built out on that space would be essentially 26 Lowe's buildings on that property. 26 Lowe's buildings on that property. That is staggering. And third, I'd like to talk about just the, the impact to the surrounding community. I've lived there for, for about, I guess, 17 years now. And I pretty much plan on staying there. My wife and I bought that house and we're, we love our neighborhood and we plan on pretty much, you know, dining in that house. This, the traffic, I really got, had a hard time kind of grasping this traffic study. They used a, a 15% number for the truck traffic addition for this development. And I find that 15%, I don't see where that is a reasonable number to expect a major, major manufacturing truck terminal-type facility to just increase truck traffic and use a number of 15%. I just, I don't think that most people in this room would agree that that's a reasonable assessment of the proposed truck, you know, component of the traffic. And moreover, and I think even more alarming to me is that study did not even address the second half of Old Stage Road. So from Leisure Road all the way to Route 30 going towards Anderson's Corner. I didn't see anything in that study that talked about that road. And that is incredible to me that that wasn't even considered in this traffic study. That road is already a mess. You can't have two pickup trucks pass there right now without one pulling off the side of the road or you're going to hit mirrors. I have friends that live on that road and they lose their mailboxes all the time because there's just not much room there. And you've got school buses going down there and that, this, for that to not be considered in the traffic proposal is, is really surprising to me. So I think clearly more robust studies to really determine the actual impact to that area regarding traffic need to be done to really assess what the true impact is. And this property is, I'd say unfortunately, it's located right in the middle of this Exit 227. So there really physically isn't enough room to funnel that kind of truck traffic, you know, quickly off the interstate to a stoplight and turn right onto Old Stage Road to really get in there without really backing up off of the interstate off-ramp. I mean, they're just, I really don't see where there's enough room to do that. And then getting to Meadow Lake where I live is going to be a nightmare trying to, to get in there during peak hours. So I really don't think that this site is really conducive to the, to the proposed activities without redesigning essentially Exit 227 to allow the entrance to be somewhere other than Old Stage Road. So in closing, I just don't think this site is suitable for the magnitude of commercial development proposed. I think the negative impact this development will have on residents in this area is just too great. So I would ask that, that you would not send this to the Board of Supervisors. I would ask that at a minimum that you should delay that until you get more feedback from the community. Because awareness is, is growing and from the feedback that I'm receiving, it's not positive for this development. So I would just ask that you get more community feedback. Thank you so much.
Next speaker is Mr. Mike Ballard.
Good evening at all. Thank you very much for allowing us this opportunity to speak. My name is Mike Ballard. I live at 2640 Meadow Lake Drive. My property as well backs up to Upper County Park. First, I'd like to say that thanks to the Hazelwood family and all their team for all the due diligence they've done and the Planning Commission, as they prepared this opportunity for us to review. This project brings a lot of good value to our community. Some of them may be the grocery stores, the hotels, the convenience stores, maybe some restaurants. That does add value to our community. It brings value to our kids and our county, developing to go shop and not have to travel too far. But the aspects of the large industrial park at, that they located at their farm does bring up some concerns. Number one concern for me, because we do live in Meadow Lake subdivision, is the route, is the Old Stage Road, which is 746. They had proposed a plan to widen that road and make some altercations to that road up to Leisure Road. And I don't want to be redundant like Scott, what Scott said, but that road is heavily traveled now with commuter traffic. And this dangerous traffic, you'll see several areas in that road where cars have gone off the road, took in that mailboxes, telephone poles and so on because large truck traffic cannot make it down that road. School buses, if you're on that road with a school bus, you physically have to pull off the road to allow the school bus to go by. Trucks like myself have 250s, cannot travel that road together. So I'd like to, if there's something continues on this, I'd like to propose to the Hazelwoods and the organization team to extend that development all the way down to Route 30, again, all the way down through. To accommodate additional traffic. I believe additional traffic is going to be pretty excessive with the amount of apartments, people moving into apartments, employees working at the industrial park and so on. I believe their study really doesn't cover that amount, magnitude of travel down those roads. Noise pollution. Currently, again, we live close to Upper County Park. We can hear the interstate from my house. Laying around the pool, you can hear all the trucks. What is industrial park going to do to our noise pollution? I know there's some ordinance that will help with that, but I do believe that the sound is going to be an issue. I know there's some ordinance that will help with that, but I do believe that the sound is going to be an issue. They asked that, if this moves forward, that something, engineering-wise, barrier-wise, or some type of engineering or change in noise ordinance will allow us to keep our community quiet at nighttime while we're visiting with our families and outside. I believe that's going to be a major problem for us. Again, with this traffic, 15% like, like Scott said. And as Trimp said, a Walmart distribution center, 1 million square feet. Have you seen the Walmart distribution by Grove? You know how many trucks come in and out of that place daily? Hundreds, literally hundreds daily. Have you traveled that road lately, where they see the trucks going through there by caterpillar? You can't hardly get down that road with the amount of trucks coming and going. That's just 1 million square feet under roof, just 1 million. What happens if we get three, an Amazon distribution, a Walmart distribution center and so on there? The amount of truck traffic coming off of interstate, coming here is going to be unacceptable, at least to our community, at least in my mind. And I would hope it would be to you. On top of that, the schools, you know, they did a great study, the information they provided. They showed that our schools are near, near, near capacity at the present time. With the 250 residents, they estimated 3.1 students per resident. I believe that will be larger. I believe also the fact that people are going to be employed in that area at their distribution center are going to add that because they're going to be building houses and moving to that area, that's going to increase the capacity, I mean, add to the capacity and overstrain the capacity of our schools. I think that's a major impact to our school community, which I have not heard anything mentioned that tonight, how that would be addressed through the commission or through the organization. And again, to go back to some of the things that Darlene was saying about a rural setting. I grew up on a farm myself, liked Hazelwoods, I loved the country, I loved living in the country, born and raised in the country. It's going to change the look of our community. You know, years ago, recall, I've been in the community now about 32 years. I remember when we had an opportunity to bring Walmart, Lowe's and Home Depot to James City County. We as a county decided not to bring that to James City County and it was deferred to York County and that's where it ended up being developed. So we didn't want that type of development or county. I know we evolved and it's, we're always evolving, but is this really what we want? I don't want to get in the way of the progress, I don't want to get in the way of the Hazelwoods, but I'd like to see something scaled back to be able to retain our community setting, maybe scale it back to a million square feet. Maybe move it back to the back of the property, still have that opportunity to have an industrial park, have the setting up front with the apartments and things of that nature if we can do it tastefully. That's what I would like to suggest. Thank you very much for your time, thank you very much again for the diligence, this whole entire team and we look forward to your decision on this tonight.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much. Next speaker is Ms. Melanie Smith.
Good evening, my name is Melanie Smith, I'm a resident of James City County. I live at 9347 Barnes Road. And I do apologize that public speaking is not my best point. Members of the Planning Committee Chairman, thank you for taking the time to hear the collective thoughts and concerns of the citizens and the landowners surrounding the Hazelwood property proposal that is being considered for rezoning and the special use application. As stated by the community members who have spoken before me, I feel there are multiple things that need to be considered and reviewed further. Not only the fact that they, that we've already mentioned, such as the need to further investigate into the impacts or the traffic concerns, as well as the effects that such a plan would have on Stonehouse Elementary School. I believe that the factors listed, sorry. In the agenda for this meeting resonate the concerns of the citizens and should be addressed. One, this proposal does not pass the adequate public schools facility test for Stonehouse Elementary as stated in the meeting agenda. As a parent of a child that goes to Stonehouse Elementary, I can speak firsthand to how overcrowded the school already is. It is concerning to me that students are already in trailers with questionable AC and heat, not to mention cramped quarters while dealing with concerns from COVID. Then there is also the concern of the parent drop-off and pickup traffic that would likely increase with a development of this nature. This is concerning as the parent drop-off and pickup lines already extend out well onto Route 30 both directions. Even today, I was stuck on Route 30 with a turn signal on hoping nobody would take me out. This has been brought to the attention of VDOT as well as the James City County Sheriff's Department and they are looking into the matter further. Two, as mentioned by Sharon, there are many concerns with the plans to address the roadway traffic as well as the pedestrian and bicycle traffic. This is also mentioned in the agenda for the meeting and I feel it is something that should be addressed before proceeding with the application process. Three, at the current state of the proffer, this proposal does not meet the Economic Opportunity Guidelines that were set forth by James City County in 2011. If guarantees cannot be made to meet the guidelines set forth by the county, then I believe the proposal should be reworked to meet the guidelines set forth by the county. I do also, number four, want to make mention of the current 130 square feet, 130,000, excuse me, square feet of warehouse and office space that is already built and ready for business but is still sitting empty at this moment. As well as the 150,000 square feet of warehouses and office space that is already zoned and has permits in place. This is not to mention the 100 acres of property in the Stonehouse Commerce Park that is owned commercial and has the infrastructure in place for the same type of plans. I'll bet this is not a concern listed in the agenda, I believe it's something that the county should consider in their approval process. With the issues stated by the speakers before me and the unfavorable factors listed in the meeting agenda, I feel that the proposal should be reworked and I hope that the members of the Planning Committee will take all of these factors into consideration when they decide their vote tonight. In no way do I want my words to be construed as a hindrance to further development of the county or that I am against the Hazelwood family developing their property as they see fit. I merely bringing to light issues I have noted in the current proposal. I hope that no matter the decision of the members here tonight, that any further development plans by the Hazelwood family will take into account the concerns of the community and look to enhance this wonderful area that I'm proud to call my home. I want to thank the members of the James City County Planning Commission and the residents in attendance tonight for allowing us to speak on this matter and I appreciate your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Rick Newberg.
So, excuse my dress, I wasn't planning on speaking. My name is Rick Newberg, I live at 2637 Meadow Lake Drive. And, and I'm not really that familiar with this plan because I just found out about it a couple of days ago. But I want to just say three things. First of all, I've lived in 42 homes in four continents. And I've found the last 20 years in James City County to be awesome. But I was pushed out of the other ones because of development and traffic and just poor quality of life. And I don't understand why this town that I came to where my wife said, "Rick, there was traffic at 450 the other day at the intersection of Jamestown Road and 199, I missed a traffic light." That was the awesome thing we found here. Everything was taken care of, landscape beautiful. And all of a sudden, we're, we're going crazy for development and I asked you all, why? What is the gain? We have more problems, more people, but, I, I'm not trying to stop them from developing, but I think smaller stuff, maybe. The other point I wanted to make is, where are we going to get the help? I was in a restaurant business for 45 years. I don't think one restaurant in this town is fully staffed. I'm pretty sure most of the businesses aren't staffed. So you want to put 2 million square feet, where are these people going to come from to work there? I don't know. But seems like, because, you know, and I think I'm getting senile because I forgot my third point. But anyway, I, I hope that, that whatever we do, we can slow down the urge to become giant cities and keep Jamestown, oh, I know what the third, I'm sorry. This, I am getting old. I was in Jackson Hole, Wyoming last week. A small county, I mean, a small population county. Absolutely beautiful, well-taken care of. And interestingly, the top 1% of that county makes income of 16.1 million a year. The next closest county is 8 million. So the county, just saying, the county's pretty wealthy, we're pretty wealthy. I don't see them trying to put any Walmart distribution centers out in Jackson Hole. So maybe development, you know, is good, maybe it's not, I don't know. Maybe apartment complexes, but I'm pretty sure that a, that a huge traffic scenario, not in our best interest, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. William Hewitt.
I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity and I'm going to try not to repeat what our other member said, but there are some distinct concerns. I live on 87, 84, 8741 Mary Oaks Lane. And this project will kill that road unless something is addressed initially. If I leave in the morning, I have to change the time to go to work in the morning, so I wouldn't arrive on the road when a bus is because then I have to put it in reverse in my, in a small car and find a driveway. A bus and a, because the bus is not going to scoot over and go into the ditch, I'm the one that's going in the ditch. 80, at Mary Oaks Lane, it's not being addressed as a traffic lane. We had a washout on Mary Oaks and it took VDOT nine months to fix it. The water, the road kept going away, going away, six phone calls to the head office and they finally came out and fixed it. Unfortunately, what they fixed will only last a few months, it's going to wash out again, they didn't address the drainage issues. There's, there's been a lot of problems on Mary Oaks Lane and that traffic. Putting this type of, those trucks are not going to turn left and see that traffic lane, they're going to see if they can get out another way because they're, when they're sitting, they aren't making money. Those guys got to get on the road and make money and get moving. So the, the infrastructure for the vehicles moving within that community is not addressed in this plan. We are not talking about Mary Oaks Lane, they come down, the only way you can go is take right, leaving Mary Oaks Lane to get on 60, then you got to make an immediate U-turn and those cars are going 70 miles an hour coming down that road. I know you don't believe they don't do the speed limit, but you got to pay attention and I drive it every day. Coming off 30 up there by the Shell gas station on any given day at lunchtime, you got to be prepared for trucks, track, these guys are going to stop at McDonald's to eat lunch, they're going to West Point to deliver their load. So you'll have five or six tractor trailers parked all over the place up there just eating lunch at McDonald's so they can hit the next. That's not discussed, where are we going to, how are we going to support that infrastructure? Big sign in front of McDonald's, trucks welcome. Asking the gas station, I don't know if you've ran a small business, to ask the gas station to chip in to pay for the water and sewer to come to his station. Those guys are working on margins that are less than most small businesses realize. They do not have the margins to pull that in. And if you think McDonald's, McDonald's doesn't own that building. The, the owner of that, they own a couple McDonald's and it's not the greatest McDonald's we have in the area. But we just don't have the infrastructure in that area. So we, the, the, asking the users of that neighborhood to go the other direction on Route 30 instead of going up to this busy area and turn right. That is a blind hill corner that you, when you hit, when you turn right, you, you look, you see nobody and you hit it. You hit it because you don't know who's coming down that road. Because those, those tractor trailers carrying those logs, I don't trust their brakes enough that they're going to actually stop and not run me over. So we avoid going out that direction and you, people that live in that area avoid going out that way. They'll come up the other side because they got a little more visibility. It's a crossover turn, so we talk about putting the light in, but it's a crossover left turn. So we're going to put a light into that station to come in. But what I didn't hear talk about is the left turn for all these trucks to go on 64. This is not a cloverleaf where they can get in the right lane and come in and merge. This is a crossover turn for the trucks on this intersection to come in and, and those areas. So what I asked the committee to do, I'm, I'm all for development, you know, but what I don't see is the infrastructure to support this. And historically in Virginia, we build the buildings first and the infrastructure maybe comes last. If it takes eight months to fill that washway for VDOT, so no hurry, because I know we're, I used to work for VDOT. I know where their money's going right now in this region. It's going to that big hole they're putting in the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel. That's where all their money is, they stopped most of their projects. So if we think we're going to have a big project up here to support this, not from VDOT, it's not on their plan and they've planned out eight or 10 years on their money. So I just ask you to take in consideration if this traffic challenge that comes in, Mary Oaks Lane, that if, if you've driven down that road, I don't know if you're familiar with that road at all. It is not a two-truck road. I tell you, if a bus is on it and I'm in it with a small car, one of, I'm backing up. And if I go through with my truck, I have a small farm right behind all the houses there. I have a very distinct way when I'm carrying a trailer with, hey, how I come in, I can only come in very certain way because I can't, I have no way to get out of the way. So I just ask you to take that in consideration, infrastructure. So thank you for your time and again, I appreciate the, the opportunity to speak, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner and Commissioners. All right. Start with a little background story. Near 2000, my wife and I were looking for a place to raise our growing family, we had three young daughters at the time. We looked all over the peninsula, Gloucester South Side, we chose Meadow Lake subdivision, Meadow Lake Drive and James City County. For the rural character, it's quiet and peaceful and the dark skies at night. It's been a great place for 20 years now raising our, our kids. I fear that this proposal could disrupt the very reasons I, I and my family moved here. So those are the three points I'm going to make, prior speakers have covered many other areas. The rural character, the noise, potential noise pollution and potential light pollution. Those are my primary concerns. The proposal talks of a special use permit for commercial activity that generates more than 100 trips during peak hours of operation also of truck terminals. This is going to generate truck noise all day long. JCC Ordinance 1520 Noise Regulations prohibits plainly audible noise as defined within the ordinance. It states, quote, "Excessive noise is a serious hazard to the public health, welfare, peace and safety and the quality of life," unquote. Approval of this project will go against the goals of this ordinance. With a development of this size, there will undoubtedly be extensive outdoor lighting. Let's see. Lighting will very likely light up the night sky, obscuring, you know, natural celestial sights. Light, light pollution must be avoided as much as possible and there are techniques, you know, lighting designs that will push the light to the ground, not to the sky. And I would propose that must be a part of the solution, okay. The International Dark Sky Association, darksky.org, provides educational resource and guidance to design lighting that does not pollute the night. And it, it does seem, you know, the approval for, approval for this project is being rushed without enough public engagement. And it seems there should be more time for consideration of alternatives that better fit the character of Upper County and better align to the available infrastructure. And I recommend that this project not be approved to proceed at this time, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Edwin Lampit. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I live at 9804 Fire Tower Road. I'm going to say a lot of the same things that the other citizens have said here tonight. But I just think it's important that you hear them and know how we feel, just the small representative, representation of the people. Because like has been said earlier, a lot of people that I've spoken to didn't even know about this proposal. I'm going to tell a story like others have done. My husband and I have been Williamsburg residents since 2006 and James City County residents since 2011. We used to live in the heart of Williamsburg off of John Tyler Road. And we looked for years and years to find rural property in James City County because we love the county. And it took us five years, but five years ago, we found our peace of heaven. I feel like this area is one of the last few remaining rural farmlands in the county. And it's a special place. It's why we chose to live there and why so many other people chose to live there that we've heard from tonight. I would like to say that I think that more people need to be made aware of this before this moves forward. I have concerns about the fact that we have inadequate infrastructure at this time. Our fire, EMS, police force, all of them need more people, just like- all of them need more people, just like every other industry right now. Stone House has children in trailers, like was already mentioned, and the traffic, I, I have to turn left, leaving my road to get to sixty-four or to go anywhere, and that's already challenging. I can't imagine what that would be like, adding all of this to that. Also, I briefly looked at the plans, and I feel like the noise pollution study might not be current and needs to be updated. And there, like Melanie mentioned, there are so many empty buildings in so many places that have already been developed. I don't know why we would want to destroy this piece of paradise that we have where we live. I know that the Hazelwood family has the best of intentions and that they've really, you know, tried to do their due diligence in this proposal, but I think what we're hearing from everyone tonight is even the best of intentions can have unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chris, is it Taylor? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Taylor. I reside at thirty-nine twenty-one Powhatan Parkway, James City County. I'm here tonight to speak on the Hazelwood Farms property. I've lived and worked in James City County my entire life. I've known Larry, Debbie, and RM, their parents, their grandmother, and their grandmother, my whole life. Their family's been an active part of this community for generations. As a kid growing up, I was lucky enough that their father, Sam Hazelwood, let me hunt all their property, a lot of the property we're talking about tonight that's shown up there on that map. For over, for a hundred and thirty-five years, the Hazelwoods have farmed the property, been a good steward of the land, and called it home. Over all those years, they have quietly sat back and watched the creation of Interstate sixty-four, as well as the widening of Route thirty, take their land. They have quietly watched as large out-of-town developers have created housing developments such as Stone House and White Hall, just to name a few, all within a stone's throw of their family home. Thousands of homes are built with thousands of people living in them. These developments have brought people who were not originally from this area, but have grown to call this county their home, and who have helped contribute and enrich our local community by being here. While all of this is taking place, the Hazelwood family has quietly sat with crops growing on their land, paying taxes, and being a good neighbor. Farming in this area will soon be a thing of the past. Small cut-up fields so far apart are not profitable for the next generation of farmers. So you're left with the question, what do you do with the land? The Hazelwood family has approached this question very carefully and tried to be very conscientious. They've sat down with staff and tried to come up with the best way to, to create a future for this land. I wholeheartedly agree that housing alone is not a good answer for this area. We've already stretched thin with schools and services that more housing creates. By creating a place for large business, high-paying jobs can come to this area. This location is close to I sixty-four, and ramps will allow traffic to enter the, and exit the site easily. I understand that some residents may be opposed to growth, but I think back to some forty years ago, riding through Towahana with my father and grandfather, and how different it looked then. And I do miss it. But I also understand that things change, that families grow, and our population increases. I feel that by allowing what they're trying to craft here, the county and the residents will at least have some kind of control with a master plan in place to incorporate some unity for the whole piece instead of a bunch of mixed-match pieces throughout this property. As the old saying goes, everybody wants to go to heaven, but not today, and I'm one of those folks. I want to stay on this earth as long as I can. I have kids, and I've helped add to the population increase in James City County. I want my, and yes, I want my kids to be able to live in the same area that I've grown up in and be close to my wife and I. I know in order for my kids and other families just like mine to be able to do this, you have to have businesses to supply jobs and generate a tax base, a tax base to maintain the quality of services we have come to enjoy in James City County. I guess what I'm saying is that what the Hazelwood family is proposing here is the best thing that could happen, because something will happen to this land eventually. It will be developed one day. I know that some of the plans here will be tweaked by the county, as it should be, to create a better fit, and I feel that by creating the big picture, such as a master plan in the beginning, is certainly the right way to go about something like this. No matter how you feel about the use of this property, I don't know how you can say no to a family that has sat quietly for all those years, a hundred and thirty-five years, as decisions and developments have made, been made on other properties around them. How can you say no to the family that is trying to work with the county and staff to mold a final product like this? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Ms. Carol Coomer.
Yeah, I'll forego my questions.
Thank you.
But thank you very much.
We don't have any more speaker cards. Would anybody else like to speak to the commission at this time? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, thank you for your time this evening, for allowing me to speak about the Hazelwood Farms' applications before us tonight. My name is Kimber Smith. I'm a resident of James City County. I reside at three oh five one Heritage Landing Road. I've been a resident of James City County the vast majority of my life. My professional career has spanned thirty-five years as a local real estate broker, a company owner, employer, and active participant in and supporter of this wonderful community that we all call home. I'm a longtime friend of the Hazelwood family. I know and respect them both personally and professionally. Being a friend of the family, I'm also familiar with the land that is the subject of the proposal before us tonight. I'm here to speak in favor of the Hazelwood Farms' applications. The roughly four hundred acres of land under consideration this evening have been owned by the Hazelwood family for a hundred and thirty-five years. The three Hazelwood siblings represent the fourth generation of the family, and they all grew up on this farm. This land and the future use of this land are very dear to them. They care about how the land will be developed. They want the uses of the land to be consistent with the county's own comprehensive plan, and they have sought to partner with the county to see that through. They've been lifelong stewards of the land, and they feel an obligation to provide the proper foundation for the future development of the land. I think what strikes me most about the proposal from the Hazelwood family is the unique and very rare opportunity for the county to approve a master plan for roughly four hundred acres that is strategically located immediately adjacent to and on both sides of a major interstate interchange. This land is a rich asset. It's a true economic development opportunity and creation for good-paying jobs in this county. A development of this scale in an appropriate location is a true opportunity to help diversify the county's tax base and tax revenues for the treasury. I think the opportunity is also rare in that the Hazelwood family has spent over five years in the effort to develop a vision and a comprehensive master plan that aligns with the county's own comprehensive plan. The family has spent a great deal of time and money to research, among other things, the uses of the land, the traffic considerations of development, engineering and design, and public water and sewer considerations for development of the land with the intent to align with the county's comprehensive plan. Very few landowners are forward-thinking, as this proposal demonstrates. Usually, large parcels are listed for sale as is, and potential buyers bring their own ideas to what works best for them, as opposed to first considering the community's plans and vision for the area and creating a master plan that aligns with that vision. Large parcels are often broken up, they're sold piecemeal, and they often result in a patchwork of uses, designs, and visual incongruencies. Larry Hazelwood, RM Hazelwood, and Debbie Hazelwood Drudge have all placed a high value on the legacy of this profit, property, and what happens to it once the family no longer owns it. They have put together a very thoughtful and orderly plan for the property. Unfortunately, none of them is getting any younger, so they realize it is also important to stay the course in this effort and to ensure the future of the land is secure and conforms to that plan. The family has also made multiple proffers with a proposal that will run with the land and definitively obligate developers to adhere to the high standards regarding transportation, road improvements, pedestrian access, building construction and design standards, water conservation, and recreational amenities, among many others. The entire acreage of the Enterprise Center is located within an area that is designated by the county's 2035 comprehensive plan as economic opportunity, which also matches the rezoning requests being made by the Hazelwood family before us tonight. The entire acreage under consideration is also located within the primary service area as defined by the county. So in summary, I believe this is a rare opportunity for the county to partner with a family that truly cares about the future of the land and a family that has spent a great deal of time, effort, and money to ensure that their comprehensive master plan aligns with the county's comprehensive plan. I heartily support the proposal, and I strongly encourage the planning commission to recommend approval to the board of supervisors. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak to this matter? Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Donald Previs, two eleven Old Stage Road. I've been sitting in here, listening to everybody come up and speak about this, and every single thing that everybody has spoken about, I can relate to, because I have grown up there. I was raised there. Mary Oaks Lane, disaster. You, two vehicles on that road, it's, it's impossible. Old Stage is bad enough as it is. Just this evening, coming here, I had to get off the edge of the road because another pickup truck passed on me. The, the road is, is too narrow. We talk about the shopping center or the Towahana Industrial Park. I've seen John Deere come and go, Lumber Liquidators come and go. Beside that industrial park, there is a for-sale sign for more of that property. Nobody's buying it, and water and sewer are already there. You look where the JCPenney is, where Water Country is, empty. You can go all over this county, where the Harris Teeter, the new shopping center, there's a lot of shops there still empty. You build this shopping center, what says that these people are going to come here? The, the traffic, a little bit better for tractor trailers coming from Richmond, this direction, getting off the exit, but if you're coming from Norfolk and you're coming back this way, as somebody mentioned earlier, the ramp is, is inaccessible. I mean, you can't, you can't get off of it. I mean, right now, that whole area, as far as traffic heading towards West Point, towards Anderson's Corner, it's, it's very, very tricky. You better pay good attention. The young lady talked about Fire Tower Road. If you go past Stone House, that four lanes goes into two lanes, and Fire Tower Road is right on your right right there. Four o'clock in the afternoon to five, six o'clock at night, it's virtually impossible to get out of that street. You may as well wait till the traffic dies down to pull out or take a right and find somewhere to turn around and come back, because it's just, the traffic is that bad right now. I just, I hope, I, I wouldn't mind that whole intersection where I live, at the corner of Old Stage Road, it could be addressed and updated. I don't have a problem with anything being built or improved or some sort of development there, but the noise, the traffic, the, the, the immense design of this whole project is just, is very huge, very fast, and most of us here just found out about it just recently. I mean, we, we had no idea that this was even a proposal. We knew that the farm had been empty for a long time, and whispers of things to come, but nothing, nothing said that this is what they were proposing. And as my wife was the first speaker, sitting on my front porch, looking across that field, it is beautiful right now, but I will be looking at apartments if this comes, and I just, I hate to see that happen. And there's a bunch of us in this room that grew up together, and this was our town growing up, and I just, I hate to see that happen to us hastily. I mean, think it through, come up with a plan that works for everybody, that we can all live with, that is safe and, and works. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, residents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for discussion from the fellow commissioners. Does no?
I'd like to say, since I represent this area, that I think everybody has brought up a lot of things that are really important that need to be worked out before we even go forward with this any further. Personally, I am very familiar with Barner's Road, Barner's Farmers Drive, all of those places. Traffic is horrendous, scary, coming out of Farmers, going on to thirty. And they're just talking about the traffic alone. Two hundred and forty apartments, that's five hundred trips to a thousand trips per day of cars going in and out. Not anything to say about the trucks. I used to live near Zion Crossroads, where Walmart built a distribution center. I think we could call Louisa County and ask them how many trips they have per day, down to sixty-four. That would be a really interesting number to have or to look into, because there was nothing there, and, and they built that. And it's great, because nobody's there, and there's no residential there. And it's just like a commerce park. There's a, a housing development across the street, but it's a big road, but it's a lot of traffic. I think everybody's views here today are worth looking into. I alone taught, when I was on a previous planning commission, we dealt with schools. Every time you get so many kids, you need another school. So, and residential is very taxing on the county. Residential development does not pay for itself, and everybody knows that. That's a numbers game with that. You know, you pay so much in taxes, and it's not even covering your kid's schooling at six thousand a year, and you don't pay three, you don't even pay six thousand a year in taxes. So residential is not the way to go. I'm really opposed to the residential in here, but, but I'm even more worried about the traffic, the noise, the light, and where is the demand for something this big?
Thank you. Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This has been a, a very interesting evening, and this, this rezoning and special use application impacts three hundred and twenty-eight acres in the Upper County, and if the project is approved, it will forever change Upper James City County. Make no bones about it, this is not a residential development or, or a small commercial operation. This will change Upper James City County, and so I think it deserves the extra scrutiny and, and additional analysis. And there's a lot of pluses associated with this project. Certainly, it does meet the economic opportunity zoning requirements of all the parcels being within PSA. It's strategically located to the interchange. You've got a cohesive development proposal as opposed to piecemeal from, from various other entities. It's inside the designated growth area. All of those are pluses, but to me, there was, there, there's a lot of pause for concern, and there's a lot of need, I think, for some, some additional analysis. And, you know, I'll gloss over the items in the staff report that, that say it's not compliant with the public schools facility test. That's an unknown. It, the economic opportunity construction phasing, only one of the three levels is really addressed in there. The, the thing that, that bothers me the most is, you could probably tell from the questions I asked tonight, is it has to do with the open-ended nature of the proposal. You know, certain uses are limited, like a bank or a fast convenience store or something like that, but certain proposals are not. And they could, they could be multiple proposals or multiple uses of the same in certain land areas or not. And I understand that the applicant doesn't have the end users lined up, ready to go in this, but, but I think, I think we're a far cry from being ready to move forward and accurately assess the impact of a three hundred and twenty-eight acre proposal for, for Upper James City County. And, and that's my biggest concern is, I mean, there could be three truck terminals. There could be multi-bay truck terminals. One of the components of that is One of the components of that is not just a, a distribution center, but there could be maintenance and repair facilities that are associated with the truck terminal. And so until the full scope and impact of this is, is known, I, I'm afraid that I could not support the, the application this evening.
Further discussion? Miss Rivers?
Yeah, I would support everything that you've said. Thank you. It definitely is consistent with the comprehensive plan and that I think is one of the things that we as a planning commission are obliged to look at. If not first, then certainly as, as a significant portion of what we consider. I do appreciate the family's desire to lock in a vision for this property. I think that that, that's a very admirable and, and wonderful thing to have happen. And the whole idea of private funding of water and sewer, I mean, who, who couldn't love that if you're part of a, of a local government? But is this application ready to move forward? I don't think so. I think there are too, too many open-ended questions. I'm concerned about not following the county's guidelines for phased construction of the residential portion of it, primarily because the whole idea of building the jobs, creating the jobs before you build the housing, has to do with, if you built the housing first, then what's, especially in this location, what's to prevent it from being occupied by commuters who are going elsewhere to work? It's a very attractive location for people who just want to hop on the interstate and run up to Richmond or run down to Newport News. So there, there are too many unanswered questions for me to be able to support this at this time. Thank you.
I, I remember this case in 218, when I first came on the planning commission, when it went to the design review committee, and remember the presentation by the Hazelwoods. And I guess the thing that I was struck at, at that time, which is kind of some of the comments that we're hearing in the back about people who've lived here forever is, Mr. Hazelwood told me that when they built I-64, he used to go out and lay it in the middle of it because there was no traffic on the thing at all. And of course, those days are long gone. And of course, when they divided that farm up there, it made it really tough because of trying to farm both sides and, and that just wasn't, wasn't feasible. But in that conversation, he was very familiar with what the state was trying to do to support business. He was very conscious of the foreign trade zone and had cited some really, I think, examples of why you'd want to put an economic development in that piece of property. And if you're not familiar with the foreign trade zone, it allows tax-free to come into this country and we are at the edge. James City County and where this farm is, is at the end of, of where that zone is. And so, believe it or not, the Hampton Port Free Zone is the third largest coffee producer in the United States because they bring in all the coffee and do all the manufacturing of the thing and all. And so, you know, the idea that you could have a light industry and have parts come in from some other place, automobile parts, and then have them assembled and then out again, was the type of light industry, the tool tax, that I think we were looking, looking for. And so I've watched this, this project over the years and as a matter of fact, as we went through the 245 comp plan, I was very protective of the language that was in the 2035 comp plan that described what the county had as a vision for this property. And at the time, I thought what the Hazelwoods were talking about in that 2A timeframe was consistent and consistent. What changed me around is this issue of open-endedness that we've talked about. And, and so the current buy right says under 10,000 square feet. And as Rich has talked about, we may have three or four in those three bays that are over 10,000. And I, and I understand and I wish I had a better appreciation for the limits of the traffic that was going to stop any size, but I think that's what Tim was trying to get to is what's the intensity going to look like? And, and once, once again, I think it's kind of open-ended. We, we just don't know at this point. There is no doubt in my mind, because I've watched this traffic study for now three years, not only for Stonehouse, but for this project, and there's been a lot of thought put into that, so that even the traffic coming out of Stonehouse and into that village center has been considered, as well as, I, I wish we could put a pedestrian bikeway across the interstate, but that's a VDOT problem that unfortunately I don't think we can, we can solve. The buffering, the design guidelines are really superior in terms of trying to mitigate some of the issues we've talked about, but, but I don't know if those mitigations are going to be able to get at, at the size of what we may have or not. I was happy to hear that the water and sewer had to be in place so that the commercial elements. I'm still a little concerned about, when you look at the village center and you look at the Enterprise Center, we're, we're talking about potentially two banks, two convenience stores, three fast foods, and, and the county has already approved the Wendy's across from the Shell Station where the McDonald's are, and we already have two gas stations on that corner. So, I mean, I understand the ability to try to find a developer to be able to know that the SUPs are in place so you can go forward. I mean, I, I really get that, but, but it's this open-endedness that makes me a little really uneasy about the thing. I, I wish there was a compromise that was in this thing. In other words, the, some of the SUP elements of the 10,000 feet as an example, you know, if we could take some of those things out. But I, I, right now, I don't know how we can go back to the board with a recommendation otherwise, up or down on this thing. Because if I understand it correctly, we're going to make two votes, one on the zoning to go from A1 to B1, and then we're going to make a vote on the SUP. So they're not separable, as, as I understand it. Is that correct, Mr. Old?
So I do think that the, for this side of the interstate, for the Enterprise Center, I do think you need to, to have the, the vote on the rezoning in the SUP. You can't really, the way that they're intertwined, for instance, you couldn't say enact the rezoning and necessarily cleanly pull apart the SUP uses. So to clarify too, let me back up a little bit. I do want to come back and make sure we're sort of clear on some of the assumptions. There's absolutely a lot of information in the traffic study that talked about the total trip generation that's expected, the peak hour trip generation. I think we mentioned in the staff report, so the build out of the property, the assumptions, the distributions, all of that has been reviewed and approved by VDOT. And then because this is so large, the county went out and hired an independent third party to review. And again, there is agreement that with the proposed planned improvements, of which there are a lot, that there is agreement with VDOT and our independent third party that the traffic impacts should be mitigated and that the traffic congestion levels in these areas would be maintained as generally acceptable. I, I do want to be clear though, for the SUP, the, the commercial SUP piece of which is in here as well, there is a rezoning piece that would allow for all of the buy right uses in, in EO. There is the small handful of uses that are SUP uses in the EO district, and we've identified those in the staff report. And then there's the commercial SUP use, which talks about any building which is larger than the 10,000 or any use which generates more than 100 peak hour trips. It's important to know for that aspect, because of the nature of this master plan, that provision only applies to commercial. Warehouse and office uses are exempt from that provision. So again, most of this development would be warehouse, the, you know, the 2.8 million square feet. Those provisions that trigger for the commercial SUP doesn't apply to those in the 10,000 square feet.
Just for clarification in the staff report, the manufacture and processing of textiles and textile products and structures more than 10,000 square feet?
Yes. So that's an, that's an SUP used in, but generally, the need for a commercial SUP, which is a separate part, applies to footprints that are larger to 10,000 feet, but that does not include warehouse space and office.
I understand. So back to the original question, is it's an up or down both on the zoning and the SUP as a package, not separate?
I, I would find it very difficult to pull those two apart. Because I don't know that one, not to say I couldn't think through it, but, but sort of sitting here tonight, I don't know necessarily that the rezoning could work without the SUP. I, I'm not comfortable standing up here right now and affirming that.
I got it. So, so I'm going to close out my comments by saying that I absolutely agree with Rich and with you in terms of the open-ended of it. I, I had two other things that, that I had a problem with, and that's the affordable housing. Now, we, we put residential in the EO to be able to support the workforce in that area. And, and right now, and I remember this with Mr. Nice talking about the commercial in Stonehouse, is it takes two and a half hours to get from the lower county by bus to go drive or get a job up there? And you can't get people to get up there and work on that. And, and so the, the idea that, that we're not going to put any kind of affordable housing in, in that piece, just, it, it just surprised me because that's the whole point of that residential piece. And given what the cost of housing is in this county, all we end up doing is having more traffic coming from Newport News, New Kent County, and all over the place for people to come work here, which is not good either. The last piece is that the mitigation for the school, there's not a proffer in there on it, and, and right now, we know that Stonehouse Elementary School is over capacity and nothing near. And so not to be able to recognize that fact, and, and it's not going to get better at that traffic. I mean, we already know that it's not going to get better. They're going to have to put a stoplight in there before it does get better for it. But, but anyhow, those are the reasons why I, I, I don't believe I could support this.
Other discussion?
I guess I'm the only one that hasn't spoken. So, so first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. So I appreciate the comments. But I'd also like to take a moment and, and thank the Hazelwoods and everybody for coming forward with a plan and, and I think a thoughtful plan. And, you know, we have been dealing with economic opportunity in this county for close to 12 years, I think, 10 or 12 years, as far as having, having that zoning. And this is the first time we've had a plan brought forth to, to look at this. So, you know, I, I say to my colleagues, as we've gone through this most recent comp plan process, you know, if not here, then where? Because this is all the things that we talked about through the comp plan being access to 64, you know, if we want to bring that in, you know, Mr. Taylor spoke tonight, he's here with some of his family. We're going to be having the same conversation about Anderson's Corner sometime in the future and we're going to have the same, the same issues and the same discussions about traffic. You know, Stonehouse has reduced their, their community by 1,000 homes, so that's 10,000 less car trips a day on that corridor. So I think that opens up a little broader support for the traffic that will be, be through that area. You know, I had the same, I had the same current concerns that my colleagues have brought forth about sort of the, the open-endedness of this, but I also recognize the need to have a master plan and what the benefits of the master plan are, as well as having some of the flexibility. I would, would much prefer to see that there was some sort of home ownership as opposed to apartments. I think that's a, a critical portion to this part of the county. We certainly see apartments of, apartments and townhomes have certainly become sort of the, the product du jour of, when it comes to, to affordable housing or, you know, workforce opportunity housing. So again, I would much prefer to see the opportunity for, for home ownership in this part of the county, especially as close it is to Stonehouse Commerce Park. You know, but overall, I, you know, I think from a planning commission level, you know, when Edwards Hamm came forward a couple of years ago, we gave a lot more scrutiny to, you know, the addition of a couple of smoke houses than we are giving to a couple, to some of these projects. So I, I understand the balance and, and the need. Certainly if we want, if we want to advance this both from, from an economic perspective of, of being the, the outer edges of a foreign trade zone and certainly from, you know, the opportunity to partner with the state to attract businesses. I mean, we're not doing it in James City County. So, you know, we're, we're left to other resources and we have folks who are willing to be put in the investment to do this. So, you know, I, I think, I think the benefits of, of this, you know, I, I walked in tonight not very supportive of this, but as, as we've listened to this and I've sort of sought through this, you know, I'm more supportive of advancing this than not at this point.
You, I, my only reservation with this project is the residential part of it and, but it's a sufficiently grave reservation that I can't support the whole project either. I have no problem with textile manufacturing or machinery sales, heavy equipment sales. As Mr. O'Connor mentioned, this, we just went through a, an extensive renovation, or excuse me, change in the comprehensive plan, and this area was left intact. Its economic, its purpose is economic development. And that's what a lot of this project is and has been. This is not a new concept for this area. This is, this Economic Opportunity Zone has been in place for at least three comprehensive plans and, and so it, it shouldn't be a surprise when somebody comes forward and, and puts forward a, a project. But residential portion of this is both, to my way of thinking, out of place, unnecessary, and places a substantial fiscal risk on taxpayers. It, it also increases unnecessarily traffic. It incre, and to Mr. Polster's point, none of, there's no assurance that this will be affordable housing. It puts pressure not only on the Stonehouse Elementary School, but Warhill High School is nearing capacity as well. This won't push it over the, the edge, but if you look at it from a standpoint of cumulative impact, it, it advances the day when Stonehouse will, will be there. The zoning ordinance, the purpose of Economic Opportunity District and the zoning ordinance is to facilitate economic development, increase the non-residential tax base, and create jobs. That's a quote. Residential development does none of this. Also from the zoning ordinance, principal uses and development forms should optimize the economic development potential of the area and encourage development types that have attributes that offer a positive fiscal contribution, which residential does not, provide quality jobs, enhance community values, are environmentally friendly, and support economic stability. All of this project does that, except the residential component. From the comprehensive plan, these properties are designated economic, economic opportunity. The EO designation is intended, quote, "primarily for economic development, increased non-residential tax base, and creation of jobs." Residential development does none of these. The principal uses and development should maximize economic development potential of the area and encourage development types that have certain attributes, provide quality jobs, enhance community values, environmentally friendly, and these are similar to the zoning ordinance. There's no mention in the intent of, of the zoning ordinance for the Economic Opportunity District. There's no mention of residential development in it. Ninety-four percent of county residents who were surveyed for the comprehensive plan believe that Ja, James City County has enough or too much residential development. And, and so I do welcome a, a family like this coming forward with a plan, which is just what the county has encouraged for this area. I just wish there wasn't a residential component to it and it's, that's my problem, so.
I would like to offer too. I-
I would like to offer too, I think from a planning commission perspective, you know, we also need to look at what the impacts are on the community. We hear the traffic piece, but we also have to understand what happens if this gets subdivided and parceled out, and what becomes of that then. You know, by having a master plan and by having SUP conditions and the ordinance, you know, we know generally what to expect. You know, the challenge, if that gets subdivided and it isn't subject to a master plan, you know, hats off to, you know, to what's there, you know, what people bring forward to come in there. So there won't be any congruity of design or scale or anything along those lines. We certainly know that it'll get maxed out to the full potential. So, you know, the gentleman talked about the brewery. I looked it up online. The brewery is 82 acres in James City County with another, I think, seven or eight acres in York County. So, you know, if you call it 90 acres, this parcel is three and a half times the size of the brewery parcel and just two and a half times the size of the square footage. So, you know, there's a lot of space there to fill. So, and if it were to be maximized, you know, we might not like what that looks like.
Leverance?
I think Mr. O'Connor makes some very good points, and there are some, this plan has a lot going for it. I just don't think it's there yet. So I'm saying that this is not the plan that is right for now, but with some additional work and some additional answers and some additional clarification, I think it could be. Because I think the whole idea of locking something in for this property could make a lot of sense for the county, recognizing that it might not happen for 20 years.
I have to say too, I am, I'm not against this project at all, except for the residential part and the traffic study. I think, I think it's a perfect place to have an industrial park. I just hope that it can be filled. We have another one that was approved across the street, that Moss Creek, that hasn't even started, from what I understand. So you kind of wonder how much industrial warehouse and stuff we can have out there. But, you know, if people want to put their money up to put it out there as a master plan, I'm for that. I just don't have, I just have the problem with the residential, and I certainly have a problem with the, with the traffic right now. So I just think we just need to get a little more information and come back to us.
Other discussion or a motion?
I'll give you another option if you so desire. So certainly the case is before the commission tonight, and ultimately the motion is what the motion is. You can choose to defer it on your own. You could choose to make a motion and send it on to the board. There has absolutely been a lot of conversation and questions tonight from the commission about wanting to better understand the proposal, maybe wanting to better understand some of the impacts, maybe understand some of the components of the plan. If you wanted to, you could also entertain a motion from the applicant. I don't know if they would like to request a deferral at all. I'll defer to Mr. Trant on that in order to spend some more time with you all better understanding this and getting you all some more information before you choose to make a motion and send it on to the board. But ultimately, it's just another option for you all. Mr. Trant?
You may.
Please do.
Thank you, Mr. Hold. You know, the Hazelwood family from the beginning has said, but we want to do this right, and we want to make sure that it's something that the county embraces, that we're not trying, they have consistently said, candidly, over some of my recommendations, and that applicant teams recognize, they don't want to go against the grain. You know, they really do want it to be consistent with the county's vision. And so if it would please the commission to have more time, we would welcome that. We want to work with you. We want to work with the community to make, not that we can resolve everybody's concerns, or all of your concerns candidly, but we'd like to try to get as close as we can.
Thank you. Leverance?
I think that would also address some of the concerns that we've heard tonight about the community feeling they don't have enough, haven't had enough time to consider this and think about it and address the things that bother them. So thank you.
I would welcome a deferral for the reasons that Mr. Trant talked about, some of my colleagues. Because I do agree with Tim that this is exactly the type of place we want it. I mean, I just got put off on the scale for it. And maybe I don't really understand how the traffic analysis constraints are going to modify that intensity. I mean, those triggers and what that really means. And so maybe I can get over the 10,000 square foot of the project if I can understand what that impact would be in terms of the traffic triggers in there. You know, I can get over some of the other issues that are there. I mean, those are systemic issues, period. But I got to agree with him. If not now, when will we decide to have economic development in the place that we've said that we want it? So it's not that I don't support the project, it's just that I want to make sure that the scale of it is about right for the trigger for it. And so that really came down to a couple objections to some of the SUP pieces, not the other pieces of it. And it was really the 10,000 square foot and what the scaling of that was about. So, yeah, I would welcome that kind of a deferral if we're in agreement about something like that.
What does, what does a deferral look like? And if it comes from us, if it comes from the applicant, it's sort of unlimited. If it comes from us, is it?
Well, we have, the postponement, we need to be to a date certain, couldn't be unlimited. So, I mean, we need to figure that out today, you know, whether the applicant is desiring of, you know, 30 days, 60 days, what have you. I don't know if they want to make that request of you. Pause for a minute and see if they would like to make a specific request. I mean, certainly, it's going to be incumbent on them to pull together responses, information, and all of that. They may need time as a project team. If not, we'll turn it back to the PC.
Thank you, Paul. It is correct. It will take some time, I suspect. I mean, I would love to say 30 days, maybe back here next month. But I candidly don't think, you know, we would be able to move quickly enough to get you information, to get responses, to get with, you know, the community to, you know, address any concerns that they may want to see addressed. So I think we're probably January. And I, I mean, I would work hard. The holidays are, you know, rapidly approaching Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's. So in any event, I think we would be at least the January PC meeting before we would be in a position to hopefully have, you know, a conclusion about the, you know, to try to close the gap as much as we could and either to agree or agree to disagree. I think it'll take us that long to get there.
Do you feel that's, I recognize the time and the expense involved. So I just, I want to make sure that we're respectful of your client and the team. So to give them, I don't want to, I don't want to say January, and then we come to January, and it's like, oh, let's come back at another, you know, I don't want to jeopardize your progress and your application. So I just want to make sure that your team and you all are comfortable with the January date.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody's excited about it. I mean, just be candid. I mean, we would prefer that it, you know, that we'd be here next month. But realistically, I don't know, I think we would be misleading you and the community about what we could get done in that timeframe. And I, you know, I think January ought to be enough time. I mean, it's possible that it's not, and we're back in January saying we need another 30 days. But I think that's a, that's a pretty reasonable goal to shoot for.
Fair enough. Thanks.
Great to have a team to kind of help keep it. So, under the planning commission's policy, you could defer for up to 100 days. So, I mean, that'll get us through January 5th. There's also a component of the state code that says if the commission doesn't act within it, within 100 days, it's got to go to the board. So January 5th works for the deferral. You would not be able to, unless the applicant withdrew the application at that time, you couldn't defer it after that. January 5th would be, it needed to be an up or down action by the commission.
Do we need a vote to defer or?
Yes, a motion to postpone this until January 5th, 2022, and then we would take the vote on that. But again, you know, unless the application was withdrawn at that point, if their questions remained or you wanted more time, you'd have to vote on it at that January 5th meeting.
Is Leverance?
I'd like to make the motion, if that's okay. Like to move that the.
I'm sorry, Julie. Can I ask a question real quick before we get into a motion? Sir, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but is there any mechanism in here that allows the opportunity for, I mean, do you as staff feel like you have enough from us for dialogue with the applicant to go back? Or is, you know?
No. So, you know, again, if there's, you know, we've got a couple of options. You know, it may be beneficial for the applicant team as well. If you all are looking for specific items or for specific analysis, like transportation. I mean, we would need to know what that is, because again, sort of the full traffic analysis and the scope of work that was previously agreed to by VDOT and our third-party consultant as what would sufficiently encompass the scope of this project is already in there. That analysis has been done. So, you know, if there's something specific more you are looking for, absolutely, I think the articulation of that tonight would best help the applicant team and would help staff really be sure that we're able to come back with the more information that you're looking for. I mean, if at the end of the day, it's just, you know, the commission's opinion generally that something isn't met, I can certainly appreciate that finding and understanding. But again, sort of a need for a more specific analysis, more specific data, more specific information, the better you could share that tonight would be very helpful. You know, certainly too, you know, if this case ends up being postponed, if you want to send staff that in writing, we could share that as well with the applicant's team. But certainly, the sooner the better, because as was said, with holidays coming up, sounds like there may be some more you're wanting to see.
I want to try to make sure that I understand what he just said by addressing the applicant, if I can. And it gets back to this point about the open-endedness and the intensity. And what I heard Jason say was they backed into the number. So they, you came up and said 2,800,000 square feet, and that was going to generate X amount of traffic. Did I understand that correctly?
Generally, yes.
And so what I want to understand is not so much how they backed into it, but what the implications are that drove them to say it would support X number of 10,000 square foot places, or X number of square feet of that. So if it's, what I'm trying to do is understand the intensity of the development for the 10,000-foot pieces that you've asked in the SUPs. And I'm trying to understand how you modeled to be able to tie in that intensity of the development and the impacts of that traffic since you backed into it. Does that make sense at all for question?
I think we can follow up with you to get more clarification, but I generally think I understand what you're looking for. I don't know how easy this is.
Jason, can you come up to the podium so I can get you on TV and mic for a minute?
And I understand that. That's why I preface this thing by trying to understand the open-endedness. And the open-endedness is, is that you guys want as much latitude as you can. And so you came in for the SUPs, and you said, okay, we're going to ask for 10,000 square feet for this. And we said, we're going to do this much for commercial. When you added all those SUP requirements up, it defined an intensity of the development of the project, of which you could have different combinations. It's like what Rich said, you could have three 10,000. Well, if you had three 10,000, does that trigger your limitation on your traffic?
I think the best way for me to respond to that is, ideally, we're looking at three or four users on the property, not, and we're talking about million-square-foot buildings, or 700,000-square-foot buildings, or 500,000-square-foot office complex. But I think the trigger in the ordinance is the 10,000 square feet. So I think that, I'd actually, when you said 10,000 square feet, I wrote, I think the reason that's in there is because the SUP is triggered at anything over 10,000 square feet. So what I would say is, I think what we looked at was, we've kind of looked at, I'd hate to imagine how many times we've looked at it in different ways, because there's so many, Walmart distribution center has a different traffic generation than a Amazon office complex. But we don't want to limit.
Whatever you did helps me to understand how you came to that. That's what I'm looking for.
Sure. And I think I've got where you're getting at, and it's just, the 10,000 square foot was throwing me off. But I think, I understand where you're, what you're trying to get. And I think we can kind of, kind of show you kind of different scenarios and what we've looked at. And I think that probably helps as much as we can is, hey, these are some scenarios we've thought of, but we couldn't present those because we don't, we honestly, we just don't know what's coming.
Well, and I'll answer the question more simply, but then ultimately, yes, we'll defer to the applicant team to bring you back information. The simple answer is, I think Mr. Trant covered it earlier. You know, again, with such a master plan, with a range of uses, with a range of allowable uses, use designations on those land bays, you can't really, and you don't know the end user, right? This is probably a 20-year master plan, ultimately. There is no real feasible way to model all of the various scenarios, all of the various combinations. You know, could be this, could be that, maybe this, maybe that. That's what you kind of get with that list of permitted uses in the EO district, and that's what you get with all those use designations on the master plan. So, you know, again, ultimately, I know they'll bring you back more information. At the heart of that traffic study, that traffic study only modeled three uses. I'll use round numbers, 2.8 million square feet of warehouse, what, you know, 70, 80,000 square feet of commercial, and the apartments. Those were the only three uses in the traffic study. And again, with the proffers, you know, those three uses and those combinations generated a total trip generation. And so again, ultimately, if this plan is approved, as that property builds out, you will get some uses get a little more traffic, some uses deal a little bit of less. But the proffers are set up to where that that total traffic count cap cannot be exceeded. So I think his earlier illustration of saying one user could, if the one user went in there that was less amount of square feet, generated a lot of traffic, could use it all up. You know, you could get 2 million square feet of warehouse space in there. Let's say it was long-term storage, maybe you only get a couple vehicle trips per day. So, you know, again, with a project such as this, you just don't really know. But the protections that are in with the proffers and proposed SUP conditions is what led staff to find that those impacts would be mitigated. But again, I know they're going to want to come back to you with a more thoughtful. That was just a very high level, yeah.
And it puts the choice with them as to who they want to come in.
And the market.
I get that piece. I just didn't understand the downside.
I'm with you. So, I mean, I appreciate having this dialogue, just because we have so many members of the public here who can understand what we're looking for, and the applicant can as well. Because you said you had specific concerns with SUPs, you know, and conditions. So I just want to make sure that the staff and the applicant and everybody has good marching orders.
Right. And I'm really happy about the fact that they can't put anything in there on the commercial side without water and sewer. I mean, you know, that took care of a whole bunch of things. And it makes it more sellable for the right product by being on this VA list at a tier four. I mean, the state starts to market the thing. Anyhow, that's one of the upsides of this thing.
Yeah, I think there was a motion on the floor. I think you.
Not yet.
Not yet. Only halfway through your sentence, okay.
But from, but following up on Tim's point. But from, but following up on Tim's point of perhaps we, and I certainly, I spent a few minutes just outlining the four things that I would like to know more about. And it might be useful for all of us to do that, to give some clarity to the applicant of what it is that we're looking for. My four are, I'd like to see as best you can, because I know this is tough, and we don't know exactly how the timing is going to go, but a better plan for providing the water and sewer. I mean, it's wonderful that that's part of the application. But I'd like to see at least some, I don't know. It's hard to put in a commitment, but at least plans for approaching partners, if you're going to be approaching the partners, other businesses along the area who might benefit from this, other property owners, to perhaps participate in this, in this effort. But to give some more information about how the water and sewer, and also if possible, the timing sequencing of how that might be provided. The second one is, I have a concern, and I haven't mentioned this before, a concern about the adequacy of the planned, the circles in the road for truck traffic. I mean, one-lane circles for 18-wheelers just sound kind of, kind of tricky.
Those would meet VDOT design. It would really be a design similar to what you'd see, say, on Long Hill Road or any of the other ones.
VDOT may or may not really be.
Yeah, they're mountable curves, yeah.
So I'm concerned about that. And plus, with private vehicles there, if you've got 18-wheelers circling the circle, how's a Mini Cooper going to be dealing with that when trying to get through there to get to the park? To revise the job creation schedule versus the residential schedule. So that if not phased the way the county wants it, at least skewed more towards the end of the commercial development before the residential is completed. I mean, I certainly understand that it's more feasible to do all of the residential at once, but at least to defer that until there are more jobs so that those jobs, people working at those jobs may be more likely to snap up that residential versus other people. And then the final is to, as we talked early on about Newtown, to consider the possibility of phased zoning. You know, as a plan comes forward for a particular area, bring to us a more specific master plan for that area. Just something to consider.
Okay.
With that, may I have a motion?
As I started this, I'd like to make motion that we defer JCCZ-19-006, SUP 19-005, and SUP-19-006 Hazelwood Enterprise Center and Village Center till January meeting.
And that, for clarity, that would be to your January 5th, 2022 meeting?
January 5th?
It's the 5th.
Yeah, that's the first Wednesday. Yeah, so we don't, yeah, so just to clarify the SUP number, we don't include the Village Center. We haven't opened that public hearing yet. We only just need to stick to this side of the road.
Okay, so just this side of the road.
The form of the motion would be a motion to postpone consideration until January 5th, 2022.
What he said.
Told you we had a great team. All right, so there's a motion on the floor?
Hold a roll, please, Mr. Holt.
Ms. Knoll. Mr. Pollster.
Aye.
Ms. Leverens.
Aye.
Mr. Croft.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Public hearing number three, SUP 19-0006 Hazelwood Farms, the Village Center. Mr. Weisong, you've been a busy man.
Yes, I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening once again to the commission. Mr. Tim Trent of Kaufman and Cannoles has applied on behalf of the Hazelwood Farms LLC and Hazelwood RM trustee for a special use permit on approximately 79 acres to permit up to approximately 510,000 square feet of commercial development to allow for the following specially permitted uses on the property. A convenience store which sells and dispenses fuel, extension of public and water sewer facilities, commercial buildings or group of buildings that exceed 10,000 square feet of floor area pursuant to County Code Section 2411A2 and within the square footage limits shown on the master plan, commercial buildings or group of buildings, not including office uses, which generate or would be expected to generate a total of 100 or more additional trips to and from the site during the peak hour of the operation pursuant to County Code Section 2411A3, and any buildings additions and expansions requiring an SUP pursuant to County Code Section 2411B. The site is located inside the primary service area and is designated for mixed-use stonehouse on both the current 2035 and draft 2045 comprehensive plans. For this area between I-64 and Old Stage Road, the comprehensive plan specifically recommends community-scale commercial uses such as a shopping center, hotel, restaurant, and office uses, and no residential development is recommended. The county is proposing conditions to mitigate impacts associated with these special uses. These conditions include the recommended transportation improvements from the approved traffic impact analysis for the project, enhanced landscape buffering along the Barnes Road, Route 30, and Interstate 64 right-of-way, enhanced site design and architectural design for each building, including commitments to the submitted design guidelines, the requirement for sustainable design initiatives, and specific restrictions regarding location and site features for certain commercial uses to protect community character. Staff finds that the special use permit will not negatively impact surrounding development, and the proposed conditions will help mitigate impacts generated by the proposal. Staff also finds that the development of the property for the proposed commercial use is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and the draft 2045 comprehensive plan. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of this application to the Board of Supervisors subject to proposed SUP conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And of course, the applicant team is here as well. Thank you.
Mr. Pollster? Two questions, the second one maybe for the applicant. But like the Enterprise Center, there's a proffer in there for the sewer and the water to come across from the stone. And there's a 60-month piece for, with the development. So does the same proviso for the Enterprise Center apply to the Village Center in terms of the commercial pieces have to have water and sewer? Question number one.
So the SUP, the five-year rule in the condition is the same. I'd have to check the B1 zoning district to see if public water and sewer would be required, if that's what you're asking. I'd be happy to check that. So I'll grab that.
All right.
Or you can go ahead with your other question.
Yeah, the second question. I'm getting seated on like the other guy. What's that question? I'll come back to it, sorry. The other? I know what it was, okay. So, so like with the traffic analysis piece, is you modeled in the enterprise pieces, three scenarios. So what were the scenarios that drove the traffic analysis for the village?
I would defer that one to the applicant team. But I will say that the proposed transportation improvements, which are conditioned with the SUP, are based on the approved study from VDOT and our consultant. And I'll go look up the B1 zoning.
Okay.
So this side's a little bit easier because it's really just modeled on the amount of square footage for a shopping center.
Right.
Don't believe there's a requirement for buildings and structures in B1 zoning district to hook up to water and sewer. We're working to verify that, but I don't believe there is. So again, you know, I think the traffic study on this one just modeled, you know, whatever it was, 550,000 square feet of retail.
I want to make sure about the proffer piece then, that there has to be some kind of a foundation slab done within that 60-month period.
There is, we have for the first building.
Not inclusive of fire and water.
Not inclusive of water and sewer. That needs to be at least a first building within the 60-month. Now, this one's a little bit easier. It doesn't come as far away as the other side. This one just really comes from across the street and hooks into Fieldstone Parkway. So there are not as many things to think through and to figure out for this one. Still got to come from a little bit. And to clarify on the last one, you do need the SUP because extension of water and sewer mains, which is required for the EO side. That's why you can't really divorce those two. But again, SUP use is also to extend water and sewer on this side as well.
Mr. Holt, can I, can I ask a question of Mr. Holt? Does, does HRTPO have any, any designs in the future to improve this interchange?
No.
Is it just based on land availability? Or is it just not on the radar?
I don't think it's on the radar. And I, you know, again, specific to this application, specific to these uses, the proposed improvements would keep that interchange operating at an acceptable level of service.
Other questions?
This question is for Mr. Weisong. There seems to be an inconsistency, not much of one, between the design guidelines and the general conditions, where the general conditions say no single building on the property shall exceed 70,000 square feet. And yet in the design guidelines, it talks about buildings over 70,000 feet shall not be subject to the design guidelines. Just wanted to make sure which, which ones going to control there.
The SUP condition language would control.
And that is the general conditions?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Are there questions of staff? On the B1?
I think, Paul, had you answered that question? I don't, I did not see in the B1 district where it would require it to hook up to public water and sewer. But I wanted to check with you.
Okay, so-
No, so I mean, at that point, you know, you default back to the JCSA regs on if you're within a specific distance, you need to, you need to connect in. But, you know, in this instance, you need the SUP to extend the public water and sewer.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? Thank you, Mr. Weisong.
Thank you.
Any disclosures, the same as before?
Same, yeah, I spoke with Mr. Trent.
As did I, great, thank you. With that, I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Trent, welcome back.
Sorry, I'm not very entertaining without my presentations. So I'm just waiting for that to come over. Thank you, Beth. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Again, for the record, Tim Trent, attorney with Kaufman and Cannoles, 4801 Cordell Street here in James City County. A privilege to be here again on behalf of the applicant. I won't reintroduce everyone. I think they're all well-known to you at this point. Just to touch briefly on maybe some things that weren't mentioned in Mr. Weisong's staff report. I won't go over again sort of the family dynamic at play here, but, but it just reminds you that it is, it's the same situation, a large piece of undeveloped property, zone B1 in this case, all of it. And their interest is like on the South Side, trying to put lockdown, a conceptual plan, and some desired guidelines that will keep this from being developed in an ad hoc manner. And consistent with the county's land use policies, it is a gateway, it's part of the same gateway to James City County as the southern portion of the enterprise zone that we've just been talking about. It is also across the street from one of our very important planned unit developments in the community, the Stonehouse community, which has, I believe, about 2,000 homes left to be built in it. So, you know, one of the significant growth areas, remaining growth areas in the county. It is our intent to comply with the recommendation of the comp plan, and that was our guide from the beginning about how to position this, this plan, this master plan to sort of try to tie down what would happen here and what it would look like. We sought to develop uses that were complementary in nature to the Stonehouse project. The Stonehouse has a small, sort of a neighborhood commercial node at the intersection of La Grange Parkway and Fieldstone Parkway, or Six Mount Zion Road and Fieldstone Parkway. So we were looking for more community-scale uses in our project, grocery stores and other businesses, potentially a hotel connected to the interstate travel and some of the tourist destinations in the county. The, and generally to provide goods and services that we hear from our friends and neighbors in that area of the county that are desperately needed in closer proximity to where they live. And the location, different than some commercial uses. I've certainly been at this podium before proposing commercial zonings elsewhere in the county and have received the criticism or the comment that, well, this is great, but you're just going to be robbing tenants from this shopping center down the street. Or, you know, it's not new tax dollars, you're just trading tax dollars. And, you know, while I generally disagree, you know, there certainly is a shifting around in some commercial projects. This, I think, is unique in that regard, given its location at the very fringe of the county, pretty remote from similar community-scale commercial uses, potential hotel use. I think it really has the ability to draw in new tax dollars. It would be a trading of tax dollars, but new tax dollars from residents of other localities, interstate travelers, as well as, you know, residents in the county, new residents coming to the county. Talked about the ideal location and already sort of covered the substance of the size of this slide, but immediately adjacent to the interstate, immediately adjacent to one of our largest planned unit developments, immediately across the street. One of the comments that I did hear one of the systems make that I want to try to address is that there was some discussion about there not being a connection between this project and the Enterprise Center. There absolutely is. We are proposing to build multi-use paths where we can on both sides of the interstate. And we don't have the ability to construct, it's not feasible for us to do anything more with the bridge structure. But there's a 10-foot shoulder on that bridge, which is larger than most bike paths. So there certainly is, there will be with the improvements that we're proposing to make, the ability to bike and walk from one side of the interstate to the other. And in part of our conditions, our traffic conditions, they're all conditions on the Village Center side. We're obligated to install a pedestrian connection to Stonehouse as well. So there'll be the ability for people to bike and walk over to this project. In the event, these are some pictures from some of the design guidelines, from the design guidelines. These are, you know, images again that go with a lot of text. And John Hopkey can certainly address any questions you have in terms of the design vision and what we're trying to lock down and, and hold future end-users accountable for and accountable to. But these are just easy visual aids for you to get a sense of this is the quality and the style of development that is being proposed. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from?
Good evening again, Mr. Trent. I just, just an observation, not to drag the same argument through because of the time. But I noticed in the SUP, the following uses are proposed. And it says, "commercial buildings or groups of buildings that exceed 10,000 square foot of floor area." And also, "commercial buildings or groups of buildings, not including office space, that would be expected to generate a total of 100 or more additional trips." And so again, looking for maybe a little bit more specificity rather than saying, you know, there could be a dozen buildings over 10,000 square feet, there could be six buildings. And so that's just the observation. And then the question that I had was, and you may have touched on a little bit during your presentation, and I may have missed the detail. But we already have an approved Moss Creek parcel that has a master plan that includes office and warehouse, convenience store with fuel sales, as well as restaurants and retails. And also, Stonehouse master plan, Land Bay 5, is designated for up to 180 residential units. And I guess the question I'm getting to is, do you see the Moss Creek project as hampering the ability of your proposal to- as, um, hampering the ability of your proposal to move forward? Uh, do, do you see the, a redundancy, or do you feel that they're separate enough so that they wouldn't be, um, competitive in a sense?
There may be some, uh, overlapping uses, uh, but no, we, we do not see it as an impediment to our project. Uh, you, you may be able to get gas on, you know, and, and everybody has different perspectives about this. Um, so, and I, I'm not suggesting you accept this as a good thing, but, um, for many commuters, they like gas on the same side of the street that they're traveling on, um, and the same side of the interse- interstate that they're traveling on. So residents of Stonehouse or New Kent County, for example, getting off the interstate will want the gas station at Moss Creek. Um, and, you know, the, the opposite is true for folks, you know, traveling from New Kent to get on the interstate or headed south into James City County, um, they want it on our side of the street, the Hazelwood's side of the street, the west side. So, uh, we, we do believe that there's room for both, and, and, and our, our experience with, you know, interstate interchange development suggests that demand will support, uh, both without being, um, you know, uh, sort of competing with each other in, in some destructive way. We think with the growth in, in both New Kent and in, uh, James City County and in, in Stonehouse in particular, that it will support, uh, both projects. And, and they have a self-storage component, which is, I think, uh, comprises a large portion of that acreage. The commercial portion, I think, is, is, is smaller, maybe half the site. So, um, w- ours is pr- all commercial in, in nature, and, and our unique feature is the potential for a hotel, which we think, we hope will be attractive and new to that, that area of the county. Sorry, um, you had also asked about groups of buildings in the vision. This is wh- what we tried to do, and I'll ask John to come up, so if you don't mind to sort of speak to, you know, the design vision, I think he'd be better suited to address your question than me. But we did try to position the property in land bays, um, with, you know, square footages associated with that to try to come, give you sort of the, the, the commission, the sense of order and, and scale that could happen in both those. So there would be commercial out parcels along the frontage on sixty, and then more of a shopping center-type place on the larger land bays in the back, but I, I'll let you add the color to that, John.
Well, there, um, not too much to say, except that, well, we went back and forth quite a bit trying to get the wording on this right, and we probably wordsmithed it to death, uh, but from a design standpoint, uh, in a sense, you know, I, I don't really care how big the floor plates are. What we're looking at is we, we want everything to look like it's an assembly of buildings that are each less than ten thousand square feet, so you don't get these giant monolithic buildings. And so that's what the design guidelines were trying to get at.
That's helpful. Thank you, Mr. Hopkey.
Any other questions of Mr. Trent? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, we have time now for, um, s- uh, speakers from the, uh, from residents. Again, you have five minutes to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. Uh, I have several speaker cards here, uh, the first of which is Norris L. Shave.
I'm Norris Shavy, and I live at nine five six three Barnes Road, which on your little map earlier says Holly Hill. And I'd never seen anything about this development until this flyer in the mail saying this, about this meeting. So I'm curious about how that is gonna affect me, uh, like, traffic, my shallow well, and things of that nature, because that section of Barnes Road is not safe. There's only been two fatalities in the last forty years, because, and, God, they have these, uh, white and black reflector things right near my house, and I hear those things being hit by car mirrors all night long. So, and to widen that road, it'd be a disaster. And then when the interstate comes through, that entire interchange may have to be redrawn. So, I'm worried about the impact and all of that sort of neat stuffs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. William Hewitt?
Hi, uh, William Hewitt, eighty-seven, forty-one Mary Oaks Lane. I'm on the other side, but to the same, uh, concern that we brought up with the traffic. Uh, i- if we, when this comes in, that Barnes Road would be a main cut-through from sixty on the other side to get to the shopping center, and I don't see in the plan addressed for an expansion of Barnes Road from one side to the other, uh, to support the, any type of traffic or throughput. Uh, I have heard after I spoke earlier that there are, there's a traffic study that the staff had performed. I just ask at this point, i- i- if there is a traffic study out there, to please make it visible to the public and ask for some transparency on where we can find it. I did look on the VDOT website for any studies. I did not see those. I reached out to VDOT. They did not tell me of any. I talked to some of their project engineers. So I just ask to this board to pre- please provide the public with, uh, this other information you're made aware of, so we can make, um, valid, uh, discussion with you on that, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Kimber Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Holderman. Actually, my comments earlier, I was trying to, at a high level, address both applications. So, so my comments are done. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. John, I'm sorry, Lock, Lockwood?
Lockwood.
I beg your pardon. Sorry, thank you.
It's all right. It's probably my handwriting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, uh, my name is John Lockwood. I live at two zero two five one Triangle Road in Barrensville, Virginia. Uh, full disclosure, I am on the Board of Supervisors in New Kent County, but I am here only representing myself today. I worked with Sue Sadler for a long time, much longer than it should have taken to get that corridor speed reduced, and, uh, like Sharon said earlier, uh, we managed to drop it a whole five miles per hour, but, uh, it has made a difference. Um, m- my concerns are for both projects, kind of an overview, and, and they are primarily traffic issues. One of the things that concerned me the most was Barnes Road. If, if a light goes in at Fieldstone, where we have Route thirty now, there's kind of a natural flow of traffic, and that left turn at Barnes Road is right where it reduces down from four lanes to two. Uh, it is a deadly intersection, and, uh, my concern is with a light at Fieldstone, it goes from a natural flow of traffic to two lanes of traffic racing to be the first to the first, to the single lane. And I'm worried about what, what's gonna happen at that intersection. I, I personally believe it will make things worse. So I would, I would hope that maybe we could go back and take a look at that and see if there's a way to put a left turn lane in for Barnes Road. Um, it will dramatically change the, the structure of that stretch of road. Um, currently, there are no lights, and we will go to, as proposed, four lights in a half-mile area. Um, I'm, I'm not saying that's a bad thing. I just don't see where it's gonna be conducive to easy flow of traffic through that area. Um, and, and the way that interse- that, that interchange for interstate is, is trucks coming off of eastbound sixty-four to go to the enterprise area are gonna go through three stoplights in that half miles, less than half mile stretch. So it, it's gonna be a, a difficult area to engineer properly. Um, that last exit, you had, or asked about it earlier, uh, coming from westbound sixty-four to turn onto Old Stage Road is only about seven hundred feet from the interchange to that, that right turn to get into the, into Old Stage Road. So, um, that is also going to be difficult to, to engineer properly so that folks that live there currently aren't hampered in getting into their homes and, and neighborhood. Um, I, I, I think it may have been addressed already, but the, the widening of sixty-four and the effect that that may have on the interchange, um, if it's not gonna be changed, then it's, it'll always be a disastrous interchange. Hopefully it will, but I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, kind of landlocking what's available for sixty-four widening, whether that can be improved or not. And then, um, this probably more connected to the enterprise zone, is, it's gonna be awfully difficult for us to make decisions about what impacts this is gonna have when we don't know what kind of businesses are gonna come here. So I would just say, I, I, I commend the Hazelwoods for a, a, an excellent plan. I'd like to see some improvements, and I'd, I'd like to see, um, just from what I've heard from the community, that they'd like to have some direct engagement where there can be a dialogue instead of this three-minute speech and, and move on. So I would, I would invite y'all, your team, to reach out to the community and, and just offer some clarification. I think would go a long way towards moving this thing forward, so. Um, but thank you very much, and, uh, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Uh, Ms. Carol Kuma?
Hi, I'm Carol Kummer, and I live at ninety-eight twenty-five Hidden Nest in, in, um, Stonehouse. I'm not sure there's anybody else here from Stonehouse. And this is disappointing because I think that we have a lot of population that would really have enjoyed coming tonight and to realize exactly what was happening. I was unaware of this at all, except that it was happened to be in our newsletter, and I took the time to print it out to, like, so it was legible because the, the print on it, the font was minute. Um, so I think that educa- educating everyone, um, needs to be improved. Um, I don't know how you do that, um, but something has to be done because it's just, you're not reaching everyone. And I think that what was developed tonight was extremely helpful, and I think that we all understand what's happening with the Hazelwoods and, you know, and think, I think they did a tremendously good job of, you know, figuring out what might be really beneficial to a large number of people. Um, but I do think, I do agree with what you all came up with as far as the problems with traffic and some of the other issues. Um, I noticed this thing on the conceptual plan. They mentioned a possibility of a hotel. Where would you put the hotel? Do they have any idea? Um, I, I couldn't read a space that was a possibility on that.
The lower right-hand corner.
Oh, okay. Um, will that interfere then if they were gonna be putting that in? And if that went in before they decided to change the routing of the exit and entrees into the, um, into sixty-four? So that would be a concern. Um, other than that, I think that, um, I'm glad there's gonna be a, a space now that more information can get out. And I think that, um, be looking forward to the January. I thank you all very much.
Thank you. Don't have any more speaker cards? Would anybody else like to address the commission? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name again for the, uh, record.
And I'm Dar- Darlene Previs again, two eleven Old Stage Road. The main thing I would ask is that when this, I found out about this because one of my neighbors takes the gazette, thankfully, and in September, and I think it was August, she called me and said, "Did you hear what was going on down at the corner?" And I said, "No." You know, we live in such a, um, fast-paced world now that a lot of us don't even take the gazette because we don't get the opportunity to read it. That's partially our faults, I guess, for living the way we do, but... So Scott May back here, he called Thomas Weisong, um, right after that because I sent out a text blast to my neighborhood, which is why you saw so many people here from Meadow Lake. Um, and I said, "Did you hear about this?" But he called Thomas and he said, "What's going on? We haven't heard anything about it." "Well, don't worry. We're gonna be getting letters out to ho- all the homeowners in the area." So we kept waiting, and we kept waiting, and we kept waiting, and we kept waiting, and last week, every person whose property touched or was adjacent got it. I didn't get it. I'm wanting driveway away from it. I don't think we have enough community people who were notified of this to be able to come together. I would love to work with you guys because, you know, we do need things down on this into the county to some degree in a controlled fashion. I would love to see more, um, we can all agree, if we lived in here, CVS is one of our only drugstore options, and they're horrible to deal with because when Farm Fresh went out of business, they had to absorb all that extra business. We need some other options down here, but like John said, you know, there's not enough lane closure to handle all that traffic going in, or lane flow to go into New Kent. My husband and I, we have an RV. We take our RV down to, um, to Grace Point. My husband had our golf cart behind the car on a trailer. He's in the right-hand lane, you know, getting ready to merge. This guy swooped around him to try to get in front of him, then slammed on brakes, you know, right there at Barnes Road. He almost, you know, we almost lost our truck because of it. There's just so many things like that that happen all the time. So I think with some talks with you guys, with some, you know, maybe we can come to some compromises. I don't mean to be ugly. I, I understand you have property. It's your dad's farm. We're proud of your dad's farm, being a Centurion farm. We love it. We love your property, and we know what you're trying to do. Um, we just ask for some way that we, as a community, can work together with you guys, get some really good information, and figure out how to solve the problems. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll, uh, close the public hearing. Discussion?
I'd just offer two, two clarifying points, so, um, Mr. Hewitt brought up the, the traffic study. I just, uh, he had said staff performed it. Just wanted to make sure that he understands the applicant performed the traffic study. Staff reviewed it, and they also hired a third-party consultant to review it, to verify it as well. So just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that the traffic study wasn't performed by, by county staff. It was done by, um, a consultant for the, for the applicant. Um, and also to, to a couple of the comments that we got before, I think one of the unintended consequences that is somewhat of a positive for the traffic study is, um, that the Moss Creek, the entrance to the Moss Creek, if I read that correctly, would have to be shifted to be down to Barnes Road, and then it would then possibly, or would have to be signalized. So if I read that correctly, it was way down in the traffic study, and I know Dexter's not here tonight, but it was, um, the, with the, the signalized intersection at Fieldstone, it would be, the Moss Creek entrance would be too close to be allowed there, so it would then have to shift down to where Barnes Road is. So, um, having gone to the retreat for a number of, of years to the pool there with my kids, I know how terrible that intersection is. Um, I know how bad Barnes Road is. I don't think we'll ever see it be a cut-through from Route sixty, um, for those who know, who know how bad that road is. Um, and if Mr. Shavy was here, I would apologize because it was probably my kids who were knocking the, the posts over by his house, but, um, you know, I, I, I think there's an unattended improvement that will come down with the development of Moss Creek a- as this goes. So just wanted to offer those two pieces up.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Pollster? All of us just finished that twenty forty-five comp plan, and, and the idea that the county's gonna get to a hundred twenty thousand folks. And, and when you looked at the modeling that was done by the HRTPO folks, uh, where the growth was gonna happen was in the upper end of the county. And so you, you go back and take a look at the census that we just completed from two ten to two twenty. The county was thirteen percent increase, and the Stonehouse District was seventeen percent. And so growth is gonna happen, and some of these amenities that are being off-
And so growth is going to happen, and some of these amenities that are being offered here in this village are going to be required, uh, over the years. One of the things that I'm hoping for is that the, whoever ends up developing this, that they are able to put a drug, not a drug, not only a drugstore, but a grocery store, because there's absolutely no doubt that the food line down at Norwich, uh, doesn't have the capacity to serve the upper end of the county for the growth that we're having. So there, there's some uses in this proc, process. Uh, I've watched the traffic studies, uh, there's been nice coordination between the Stonehouse development and this Hazelwood with the signalization. Uh, I did catch the same thing that you did in terms of the Barnes Road for the development, for the signalization on that, because that is a rat race to get from those two lanes, and, and it's a straight shot for that, and everybody's racing down there, and even though, I mean, it's just going to get worse i- in my sense. So I, I'm glad to see that at least there's some effort to, to be able to do that. So I, I'm willing to support, uh, this, uh, this SUP.
Well? Um, yes, I, I also look more favorably on the Village Center than, than the previous case, and, uh, one, it, it's a much smaller scale, it's 79 acres, um, but also, it, it's strictly an SUP, um, for a property that's already zoned B1. Um, it's envisioned a, as an entertainment, retail, office, and business support complex, and so I think that's, um, those are services that could benefit the growth that's coming into the upper county. Uh, and I still have a little bit of a concern about an open-ended 10,000-square-foot, um, series of buildings, but I think Mr. Hopkey's explanation about, you know, trying to attempt to come up with a design that doesn't give the appearance of massing, but rather individual, uh, components, uh, was, was a very creative, um, solution, and so anyway, I, I can support this.
Could I ask one question of, of staff? And I apologize for not having this open, but will Director of Planning review design guidelines before they go through?
So we've reviewed the draft that's included in your set. If, if the question is, as building permits get pulled, will the planning director review those against the design guidelines? Yes, that's the way the current conditions are set up, to ensure that consistency, then ultimately with, you know, any disagreement and appeals to the DRC. Yep.
I just, I would hope that, you know, what we see in the design guidelines becomes more of a fruition than what we see, you know, the, the fake fronts at, uh, the pottery factory, so, uh, you know, I...
Those are horrible.
I, I mean, we, you know, we, we sort of laugh about it, but when, when Joe Poole was on the, um, Planning Commission, he, he made that, you know, that exact point, and I think what his, his concern was, um, is painfully obvious, so.
Thank you. Other discussion? Or may I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, uh, for the approval of SUP 190006, Hazelwood Farms, the Village Center.
Thank you.
Oh, with conditions?
With conditions, okay.
Sorry. Forgot that, with conditions.
I wasn't going to let you forget it, that's right. I will. Ms. Knoll?
Hi.
Mr. Pollster?
Aye.
Ms. Leverens?
Aye.
Mr. Crop?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
And Mr. Haldeman?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Uh... Standing Director's report, don't go away.
I know it. Um, given the hour, nothing additional to report tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, but certainly if you have questions, I'll do my best to try and answer.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, discussion or requests? Mr. O'Connor, you're on for Board of Supervisor, but I guess there is no, no, uh, nothing to report, so.
I, I hope I'm off the hook, because I have other conflicts too, so, thanks.
Are we still on for 6th November? He's nodding his head. Yeah, yes, yes.
6th November?
For the comp plan review.
Not 10.
Is it 6 or 10?
10.
10.
Some Monday, right?
Um, I think, any, anything else? Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned? Thank you.